It's a lot cheaper. Then we probably, we only get one at, on Taylor Road. Do you know where Taylor is? Almost in the line, almost.
And what they done is they had put in the e-trons and it leaked.
Oh, so I said, well, I'll have to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray. Father of heaven, we pray that you be with us today and guide us in our actions to do the right things for the right reasons. We deeply pray for your guidance as we begin to implement our county strategic plan. We also pray you welcome for Shaker's motor to be with you and that you comfort Brooke and his family in their time of loss. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Here.
Mr. Danz?
Here.
Mr. Hilliard?
Here.
Mr. Krolczak?
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Shaker?
Okay, uh, we go with meeting agenda.
Approval of meeting agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. Okay, first and second, uh, any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, agenda. Minutes of August 19th, 2014, board meeting. Minutes of September 9th, 2014, special meeting regarding the county strategic plan. Minutes of September 9th, 2014, special meeting regarding the proposed library capital improvement planning process and the September 24th monthly appropriations and fund transfers which are attached under Appendix A.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Public comment, anyone wishing to speak, uh, this is a time for them to speak. Uh, I'd ask that you raise your hand to be recognized and then come up to the podium and, um, state your name and that, and you'll have five minutes to speak. So if anybody would like to speak at public comment. Seeing none, moving on. Recognizations, announcements, and correspondence.
Uh, just, uh, there's a few extra things on your desk that have just come in over the last day or so. Uh, one is the West Shore Medical Center letter, uh, to make appointments. Uh, they have three appointments coming up. You will make those appointments next month. They've given you three names to consider for three positions. If you not, if you remember that process has changed, they don't give you three for each position anymore. They just ask for your consent on those three individuals. So you will be asked to consider those people next month, um, for three-year terms. So I, I thought I'd give those to you early so that you could, you know, decide whether or not you agree with those, those individuals.
Are those referrals? I don't know. Let me think, let me look here. Does Doug Clark serve on that?
It does look, it, it looks to me like they're three, three referrals, but I could be wrong. Doug Clark might be someone new, or Kelly Clark's, it's Kelly. Kelly, Kelly is on the hospital board, I believe, so I...
Is Doug on the hospital?
Yeah, but Doug isn't mentioned there.
He's on the hospital?
No, no, no. Doug is on the DHS board, which is medical care facility and, and, uh...
Okay.
And then also on, on your desk is a letter that I've sent to NEMSES, the Northern Michigan Subsubuse Services Agency. They sent a letter that's attached to that letter asking what to do with the money that they currently have on deposit, which I think is thirty, forty thousand dollars. There's a, uh, NEMSES will not be handling our subsubuse services anymore. It will be a, a new regional entity that was put together by the state of Michigan through Central Wellness, and, uh, they will be handling it. So they're asking whether they should send the money to us.
They should send it to us because we, they'd help with their debt.
You don't want to do that. He's going to split it to you.
No, no. You know what, that's why I'm explaining this to you. If you do that, then you have to go through a whole truth and taxation thing again, and you don't gain anything. So the money is going to, so I've sent the letter after speaking with Mr. Schmidt. It was best to send, we had to do it by, by September 20th. So I sent the letter, and I just want you to know unless you had an issue with it, I asked them to send that money directly to the new regional entity. Then also there's the, a revised kettle hole drain agreement. The only change on there was to put a, a blank there basically for the Stronach Township Board of Trustees as to when they approve the, you know, like you approved last month to make the payment pending this agreement. Um, the only change is that we will put the date in there as to when they approve the agreement, which Mr. Batta Bunker has given me, and we'll just, we'll just put it in there.
You got the date there.
The other, and the last thing on your, uh, board, on your, uh, desk is a live, work, and visit magazine put out by the AES. It's an excellent, uh, piece of information that you might want to just take a look at. I just provided, we have those in our office, and, uh, just thought you might want to take a look at some of that. Um, I think that's it.
That liquor tax fund balance, that don't have to be voted on?
I'm thinking we need a motion on that.
If, if, if you would like to, you can, you can do that.
I would think that would...
Actually makes me feel a little bit better.
I'll make the motion to sign the agreement with, it'd be the NMRE now to send the money there. We already made that motion about two months ago to send it there. But I guess the motion should read that we're going to take the excess liquor tax money from Northern Michigan Substance Abuse Services and forward it directly to our PIHP.
Yes.
Which is?
Which is NMRE.
Yeah, Northern Michigan Regional Entity.
Yep.
Okay.
So NIM's done, NER, NMRE, right?
It's going to go to NMRE, yeah, for the NM-SAS.
Still agree to use it.
Okay, I have a motion.
You'll lose it. You'll lose it.
It's too much.
Northern Michigan Regional Entity.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
One second.
Okay, a motion, second, and more discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Thank you. We're going to address, uh, kettle hole drain issue here in about ten seconds, it looks like. Next on the agenda, uh, review and consideration of the kettle hole drain finance agreement between the county and the township of Stronach.
I'd like to make a motion to table a decision on that, too. We have a full board.
I'll support that.
We have a motion, support, discussion. No discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Uh, no.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Motion carries. Review and consideration of resolution 2014-16, which assess MASTI County's re-minification peer group members and contractors pursuant to rescinding legislation signed by the governor.
Yeah, in your board packet, my computer, I let it go off, but, um, in your board packet, there's a resolution. Um, you've already really approved all these individuals to be a part of the re-minumentation program, but the state of Michigan just recently amended the, uh, statute and Pat Bent, or, uh, yeah, Pat Bentley, the, uh, county surveyor, says that the state now requires that a resolution be adopted each year stating that these people are paid people, these people are, are contractors, these people are peer group members, and that's what that resolution states, and it's a resolution that, uh, makes your decision retroactive to April when you made the original decision. And he, he calls it just a housekeeping measure because you've really already approved those contracts. So if you are comfortable with that, he needs a resolution so that he can show the state that that was done.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Scher?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Moving forward, uh, review and consideration of tentative collective bargaining agreement between MASTI County and the GEA TPA, TPO AM employment bargaining unit. This is, normally we would go into closed session.
Well, it's up to you. Uh, it will require a, a majority vote of this board, which would be, uh, will require four votes. Uh, it's up to you whether you want to do it in open session or closed session. We are allowed to go into closed session because you may want to deliberate and ask questions as to, or, or make suggestions for changes in the contract. It is a tentative agreement. The agreement has been ratified by the union, but not ratified yet by this board or the li, I'm not sure that the library board has acted on this yet or not.
I think they have, it will be up to them.
So you will have to take final action and release all the information after you come out of closed session, but in case you have questions or other issues about the contract once Lisa explains it to you, since you haven't seen anything yet, only the personnel committee has seen it, uh, I would suggest that you go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, and the motion would be to go into closed session pursuant to section HC of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for the purpose of deliberating the tentative collective bargaining agreement between MASTI County and GEA slash TPO AM employed bargaining unit.
Okay, and...
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, but also in the motion, we have to have Lisa in there, Jill in there, and Tom in there.
Yeah, we need to have those names.
Okay, is that okay with you guys?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else that need to be into this, Lisa?
I don't believe anyone else.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, we are in closed session. Well, let's go in, we're back in open session, thank you. Contract right now at this time?
We have a 10:30.
Yep, yep, we are, yep, we have forty-five minutes.
We lost most of the crowd.
Yeah, Nipper's probably still walking around the building, so...
He left.
He left?
You kicked, you laughed.
Okay, um, we're back in session, um, discussion on union contract. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the union contract that was presented to the board.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, for the media, uh, we, we voted on a contract for the, for the union. This union, um, is with the library union and the courthouse union, and the library board meets this afternoon, so we don't know if the, the library board is going to ratify this contract or not until after that. So if they don't ratify it, it's not a contract. So what we have to do is we have to wait for them to pass their portion of the contract before we can make it public. So, uh, as soon as they meet and vote and if they pass it, uh, then it will be a public document. Okay? So that should be, what time is your meeting, Richard?
2:30.
So sometime after probably three o'clock or something, we should know one way or the other. Okay. All right, moving on, finance report.
Okay, let's see, that is page twenty-three.
But you have good eyes.
Huh?
You've got real fine.
Yeah.
There, you're a little, little bigger.
Bigger, bigger, bigger. Okay, um, okay. Demand checks totaled six, six hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-five cents, um, and I'd make a motion to accept those and same we can place them file.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, for the finance report, um, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to Ways and Means.
All right. Uh, Mr. Schmidt recommended that the bid be accepted from Max Tree Service to remove the large maple tree in the northwest section of the county courthouse lawn at a cost of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. An alternative recommendation was proposed, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
I was curious just about one thing, that, that bid was quite a bit lower than the others. Did that bring up any concern?
Yeah, we asked Mr. Schimke, who's not here, about that, and he said he felt they were competent and that they would do a fine job, so...
Didn't know.
Richard, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's exactly what we did.
Okay, uh, hearing none, more discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, for the finance report, um, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on to Ways and Means.
All right. Uh, Mr. Schmidt recommended that the bid be accepted from Max Tree Service to remove the large maple tree in the northwest section of the county courthouse lawn at a cost of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. An alternative recommendation was proposed, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion carries.
And actually, the computer that they had thought they wanted is probably going to be less, but I gave them up to eleven hundred, in case they have some incidentals they got to buy.
Well, didn't, didn't we actually talk about this last one?
It was a different, a different transfer.
It was a computer, but it was something...
It was the same department.
Same department.
Yeah, this is kind of a regular thing. This is a big problem.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bergstrom?
Yeah, you skipped to one.
To one.
I just want to see if you guys are paying attention.
Yep.
Mr. Krolczak recommended that the equalization department and planning department fee schedules be updated as presented. Uh, no alternative recommendation was proposed, and I'll make that motion to, uh, to approve updating the schedules, and then in a sense they're, what do you call it, coterminous? They're, they're the same now. And I see the, our equalization director is here, so if you have any specific questions about that, I would recommend you address them to him.
I'll make that motion.
Motion?
I already had a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second discussion. Um, what other, is there a list?
Well, actually, they're, they're getting performance, but Roger, do you want to maybe just give a couple of?
Just, yeah, just a quick update.
Um, if you look in the appendixes, you'll see the original fee schedule and then the revised ones, and pretty much the big changes were, uh, in the original fee schedule, it says the 2008 aerial photos, and we're updating that to say 2013 aerial photos. And also for the purchase of large amounts of data, um, there was no, no discount if you purchased the entire city or, or, excuse me, the entire county or one of the townships. And for example, the quarter sections, if you purchase them at a hundred dollars each, there's two thousand two hundred and ninety-two quarter sections, and basically you would have to bill a person two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to sell them that. And of course, we're never going to sell them that much data, they could fly their own aerials a lot cheaper. And so we put in a price where we're hoping that maybe somebody would purchase it all, and that would be at thirty thousand dollars. And so it's kind of giving a discount if you purchase large volume, and we're really hoping someone actually purchases it, because the original one was way too much.
Okay.
And both the planning and equalization sell the data, and so that's why we're updating both schedules.
Was there any consistency with, with the other counties in the area, or...
Yeah.
Or how did you come up with these things?
For example, uh, if you purchase the entire county, it's now thirteen dollars and nine cents per quarter section, and when we looked at Traverse County, they were at ten dollars a quarter section. And so ours is a little bit more, but, you know, we thought it was a, a fair, a fair price to put in. And again, we're just hoping someone does buy it because, you know, we have the data, the more times we can sell it, you know, the more money we can bring in and...
So between looking at other counties and then rationalizing what might be right in this area, you came up with the figures?
Yes.
And is there greater potential now that people actually purchase from the county?
Yes, in fact, we're, we're actually going to be selling it.
Yeah, we were, we were way out of line before.
And still, if you want just one quarter section, it's still going to remain at the hundred dollars. And so if someone wants, a lot of times we have, you know, someone coming in, like a realtor or something, that wants a high-resolution map of a, just of one small area, and it's still going to cost the same for that as this is for the large volumes of data.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the floor, any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
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 Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
At a fairly moderate amount, five thousand dollars.
That particular one really maximizes the patient's potential with that table. I mean, all of these have specific reasons that I think are legitimate, and I support them all.
Most everyone of them submitted for.
Well, I know the last grant's...
They just lowered the...
I know the last grant cycle, we didn't have any money for other grants, so I'm not sure if that's gonna change.
You don't even have, you don't even have enough money for, to pay the entire pill payment. We will all get reduced pill payments and stuff.
Okay, so that means there's not gonna be any money for any other grants?
Except for safety.
Well, public safety, yes, for five or six, yes, but for that last one, it's other grants, no.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Okay, that really completes the actions that were occurred at the Ways and Means Committee. If there's any questions on some of the other items that were discussed, we'd be happy to address those. We had some, a pretty heated discussion about the AES board and funding, and I'm sure we'll be dealing with that more in the months ahead. Also about what they're doing and what their staffing is, and that we are not getting a lot of information from them about. And I see Mr. Kaminsky has provided us with some updated information recently to ESA.
And I will continue to try to send those. We meet today in a regular board meeting, so you will hopefully tomorrow or the next day get the report from the staff this month. So I will start making sure that you receive that information.
Yeah, I was about that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, accept the report.
I'll export that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Housed and reviewed, did not meet personnel. Mr. Bergstrom, please.
Oh, okay. Forty-four, yes. Okay, the president of the meeting was myself and Commissioner Jeff Donz. Let's see, the first item, Mr. Donz recommended that effective October 1, 2014, the employment agreement with the county comptroller administrator be renewed as written for a three-year period. Renewed annually and authorized county board chairperson to sign the same. An alternative recommendation was proposed. I'll make a motion to, do you want these split up, Tom, or we can do these?
I think you probably should.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that action.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, this first one's for the county comptroller then?
Yeah, and that's a three-year...
That's a three-year contract.
And if I remember correctly, I don't think we built any changes in on that, so...
All the, just so you know, all the contracts are written identical except for the term. I mean, I don't think there's any changes in any of them, so I, I know Mr. Marshall's gonna bring some issues up, and those issues really occur in all the contracts, I just want you to know that.
Yeah, it's my third time talking about this, and it's evident. I think I've been the only one that's had a problem with it, but he's got a, the county comptroller has a three-year contract, and we review it annually. If we terminate him tomorrow, let's say, if that was the beginning of his contract for whatever reason, or for...
Well, not what else.
It gotta be for cause.
For, for non-cause.
For non-cause, you pay the whole thing.
Then we have to pay the three years, and, I mean, give me a break here, and then, and then why are we reviewing it every year? First of all, I'd like the personnel committee to consider taking the county commissioner actually, and all the others, out of the step system and just put them on a separate contract. I don't feel that they're, one, obviously, they're not a hourly employee, they're not a union employee, and they're not an elected official employee. And this will be, I can say the same thing for all, every one of these that we talked about today, so I'm gonna just say it one time. But for this non-cause, if you would consider taking it to the fiscal year of that year, I could deal with that a little bit better than paying him for the next three years. Another thing, like I say, I would like the personnel committee to talk about it, removing them from the step system and separate their contracts, and go out and, and look at, are we paying them enough or are we paying them too much? I'm talking about all the positions, and I think it's fair to their professions, and that's just the way I feel. I don't like this reviewing annually. I have no problem if you just said, we're gonna give them an evaluation every year, but the way it's worded in what we do here, it's like, we could change, change everything today, but we can't because we've already have a three-year contract, so it's really conflicting material that I'm giving. After I said, hold that, I'm gonna approve these because I don't wanna be one sitting here saying, I'm not satisfied with their jobs. That's not what, that's not what I'm talking about, about being satisfied with any, any one of these positions' jobs. I just think that they need to be excluded from the step system. I think that they need to be compensated what might be statewide or regionally wise, and I don't like paying them for non-causes, cause three years or two years.
Couple of, couple of quick points, and I don't disagree in principle with some of the things you're saying. The thing of it is, when, when the contracts were first developed sometime back, the three-year clause is there renewed annually, is there to give a little bit of stability, and, and boards can be unstable themselves, and you can get into personality disputes also, which we don't wanna get into. And before a board tries to have a separation, if you will, that gives them some reason for thinking about it before they try to do that. So, somebody may not like Mr. Kaminsky, and it can become personal as opposed to more of a business standpoint. So that's one reason why that's in there. The other aspect that you brought up in regard to the step system, we are beginning that process of looking at trying to come up with something better, because a prime example is Tom's been here an employee of the county for 28 years, and he's still not topped out, and he won't be for another several years, which to me seems a little bit ridiculous.
Mr. Marshall, Mr. Segal is actually researching it now. At our last meeting, that was almost similar to what you brought up.
Well, I noticed in, in the package here that you were talking about something, but I didn't know what.
Yeah, and we can't really talk about it because we don't know.
We don't have.
But I would assume that you wanted to be somewhat consistent with other counties or going?
I think that's fair.
Yeah, yeah, so part of it would be investigating by the county, see if they have the same clause.
I can tell you that when the contracts first started, and we, number one, I worked the first 20 years of my career with no contract. I never asked for a contract, a county commissioner several years ago thought, we should have contracts, and contracts were developed. I never asked for a severance package that included my entire contract. It was written that way by the county's legal counsel, and the renewed annually was to make sure there was an evaluation done, make sure that if this board like today decided to vote against this contract, I still have two years. I kinda am getting the, the impression from the board, if you vote no today, well, we might not want Tom for much, we might not wanna renew his contract. So that gives me some time to start looking. If you wanna renegotiate the severance clause, I can't speak for the others, but I have no problem with that. In fact, I've never negotiated anything in my contract. I accepted whatever the, the contract terms were. I've never said, I want this changed or that changed, ever, and you probably won't see that from me. The other side of that is that we must give, according, in our contract, we must give three months' notice if we decide to leave. Otherwise, we forfeit sick time or vacation time that we might have coming. We can give you two weeks' notice, but we forfeit that time. So that's the protection on the county side, and I can tell you, when Karen Moby resigned, that was very, very valuable to us because we had three months to hire Lisa and actually overlapped Lisa and Karen for a three-week period, which was very valuable. Now, is that three years versus three months a fair deal? I don't know, and, but I, I just want you to know that I will do whatever you want. I have no problem with it.
I don't think it's unusual for the chief administrative officer to have a multi-year contract, but I think, you know, Lisa will be able to gather that information. But I know in the private sector and other public areas, education, the president of the college, and vice president, et cetera, there's a, there's a process there, and there's often one, two, three, and five-year contracts, and it's very similar terms. For your top people, I don't think that's unusual, but I think Lisa will be with it.
Well, I'm satisfied that you're looking into something, that, that you're actually looking at the contracts. That part of it I'm satisfied with, so we can, we can talk about the three-year pay clause there and all that, which I don't agree with, but for, for right now, I will be, I will accept the process that you're looking into, and we'll go from there.
And that would have been initiated if we weren't kinda concerned and wanted to find out what the situation was to us.
I just wanted to point out that I think the contracts are good, three-year contract and two-year contract. I think it tells our employees here that we're happy with their work, and it gives them a little stability, like Tom said, okay? If we don't agree, if we don't renew his contract, that means, oh, they're not happy. Either he has to change what he's doing, or has to start looking for another job. So I'm thinking if we renew it every year, that's telling him that we're happy with what he's doing.
I think Mr. Marshall is correct in that if you started researching contracts across the state for people in my position, that a severance package paying the entire contract amount is probably a little bit unusual. It's more like six months, or a year, or three months, or whatever. But keep in mind that that is for non-cause. In other words, if you just decided today, we just think we need another administrator, you can, you can, you can eliminate me today if you want, with a five, five-member vote. But if you, if you fire me for cause, then I do not get that, the remainder of that contract.
If we asked you to quit smoking and you didn't, would that be cause?
I did quit smoking. Ninety-nine percent.
Thirty minutes ago.
Ninety-nine percent.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I think Tom did a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Donz?
Go ahead.
Mr. Donz recommended that effective October 1, 2014, the employment agreement with the county planner be renewed as written for a two-year period, renewed annually and authorize the county board chairperson to sign the same. An alternative recommendation was proposed. Make the motion to approve that renewal of the contract.
A motion, a second, discussion?
I just wanna say, it looks like he's pretty confident he's not here. He's not gonna renew it, so...
Same concerns here.
Same concerns, okay. Roll call please.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Donz recommended that effective October 1, 2014, the employment agreement with the county equalization director be renewed for a two-year period, renewed annually and authorize the county board chairperson to sign the same. An alternative recommendation was proposed, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any more motion, we have a second, discussion?
Same concerns.
Same concerns.
Roger's here, though.
Yeah, Roger is here, he was a little concerned, okay. Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Sorry.
Lisa just played out to me that it says in there that the chairperson signed the personnel officer's labor agreement, that, that's signed by me. She's...
You hired her.
I hire her. The equalization planner and administrator, I'll sign the county board chair.
Do we need, is that an understanding, or do we need an action on that?
If, I think, well...
As long as we all understand.
If you understand, I will make sure that that is changed, as long as you're happy.
Are there, are there other items regarding board action? Mr. Segal presented a summary of performance evaluations for Mr. Kaminsky. Committee complimented Mr. Kaminsky on his performance. The committee next discussed the financial status of Manistee County Road Commission, and it was kinda just general discussion, and that was about it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, accept the report.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on the personnel report? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public safety, Mr. Donz, please.
Okay. Page 75, there we go. Public safety, meeting was held Wednesday, September 3 at 2:30 PM. Commissioner Schaefer and myself were there along with Chairman Hilliard. No, no, you were absent.
I was absent, yeah, sorry.
There were no items that were acted on. It was an informational meeting, and you can recap going through the minutes. And with that, is there anything anybody cares to discuss before we accept the meeting minutes as presented? Had a detailed review by Lieutenant Pizala in regard to the sheriff's operation.
I have a question here. There was some discussion regarding overpopulation of cats in the county. Sheriff Kowalski stated there are little lives to govern them, and the county animal control officer has no ability to catch the stray cats. So if the man's right, the feral cats are running all over the place, is that gonna be done?
Is that correct? The only thing I would also state here, it can, it will be misleading, one of the questions I had in regard to tribal police, because I was not aware of what agreement was there with the sheriff's department, and there are a few sections of road and also the casino property to where the tribe is deputized for their, for their police department, where they can actually...
Enforce their laws.
Yes, yes. And I was not aware of that, so I asked Dale about that, and he brought me up to speed, and that's, it doesn't really state that here in the minutes, but that's, was the gist of the conversation.
I can tell you that the cat issue was brought up by me just with a question that I asked the sheriff, because the city council had discussed it, and that's when he, he indicated basically that we have one animal control officer, and that animal control officer is very busy just dealing with dog issues and other animal issues. He's not out chasing cats, is, is what really is about the gist of it.
I wonder how many songbirds are not making it, because all the feral cats are...
In that same report, maybe you can help me out there, there was talk about pricing on clothing and meals and all that. Is that something that's being implemented, or, and all that information?
The new jail administrator has many new ideas that can produce revenue. And some, one of those things is, for instance, allowing inmates to purchase more food if they want to. We obviously feed them a certain portion of food every day. If they wanna purchase more food from the commissary fund or their jail inmate account, they can do that, but it will cost them. The same thing with if they want a different kinda sandal or something like that. He, he has many ideas that could produce some revenue, and that's what he's reporting.
Well, I'm, so I've read all them reports. Just what I'm, what I'm getting at, are they being implemented now?
I think he's starting to implement some of those things, yes.
Any more discussion on the public safety report?
I'll make a motion to accept the public safety report of September 3.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Technology.
Please, you'll lay it out here. I need items. I believe we only had one item on there. Let's just see.
Yep.
The committee made a recommendation to the board to support the idea of a partnership with the state and the county government, LiDAR, LiDAR partnership image capturing program, with a commitment of up to eighteen thousand, thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents pending final approval of the actual agreement. And that's my recommendation. And if you have any questions, well, go ahead, I give you the second first.
I'll support that.
Okay, if Rob was here, he could tell you what that is. Maybe Roger can explain it a little bit.
Okay.
It's a great opportunity.
It's something we need to get into.
Yeah, Rob understands it a lot better than I do, but basically, LiDAR is for the plane that's not aerial photos, but they would fly over, and it would bounce off the ground, and they would get elevations for the entire county. And those could be used in drain districts, watersheds, road projects, a whole number of things it could be useful for. And FEMA is gonna be flying these no matter if we participate or not. If we participate, though, we would get the data right away, and we would be able to sell the data ourselves and use it. And pretty much when we went to the technology committee, we just wanted a commitment that the, the board supported the idea, when the contracts become available, that we would go ahead with it. And, you know, if Rob was here, he'd be able to tell you, he had actually a slideshow presentation where he went through all the advantages of it.
This was brought to us last month in regard to this, I think you said, a township basically costs about twenty thousand dollars, and this is eighteen thousand for the entire county.
This should, this should help Mr. Smith, this should help many others. I mean, right now, the McGuinness Drain, from what I understand from what Mr. Smith has said, is looking at a program to fly an aerial or something similar to this that will cost about twenty thousand dollars, just for the McGuinness Drain. Then on top of that, the, the engineer would then...
Interpret.
Inter, yeah, I, I guess that's the best way for me to say it, because I don't understand exactly what's done after that, but go in and, and actually provide the maps. Under this program, we'll do the entire county, which will take in all the drains, and any other developer-related information that might be sold down the road. There might be developers like Myers, for instance, that may want this information, or some other organization that's a developer that comes in. And Rob Carson, our county planner, who is already being paid for us, will be able to do all the mapping and not have to spend the money, like on the McGuinness Drain, to, to provide that information, not pay an engineer, which will then save the residents of that area from being specially assessed to, to do those kinda things. There's just a lot of, I mean, there's just a lot of positives to this, and so the, the committee is really making a recommendation to approve this. I didn't want them to go all the way with this because there will be an agreement that will need to be signed, and we'll need to have that reviewed and have you actually agree to that agreement, kinda like the kettle bowl issue. I guess you can't, if you, if you really feel strongly about it, if you feel happy with the agreement for about this amount of money and add to this to authorize the chairman to sign pending approval or review by the county prosecuting attorney, you could take care of it right now and wouldn't have to come back before you again. But if you're happy with, well, we're not sure, the figure could change a little bit, too.
Well, this is, this is what Evan wrote from the state is...
Proposing?
It's pretty well set, yes.
I thought he said it was...
So if you wanna, you know, avoid it coming back to you again, you could tweak that, that motion a little bit, approve the entire thing, including the agreement, authorize the chairman to sign the agreement, pending a, a review by, by the, by legal counsel, if you wanted to do that.
Okay, I can change my motion.
Well, what if it comes in higher or lower than what...
Well, yeah, that's, I think that's why I said it.
Bring it back.
Okay, so I guess it's no big deal, be a second meeting, are you okay?
And another thing that Rob stated, though, is Myers paid for all this for their project. We could have sold that to him if we had the information.
And I think it's far as...
We own, isn't it, heavily subsidized by the feds, and normally it'd be about eighty thousand to do this?
I think for us to do it ourselves would cost somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars.
Is there any data or any documentation that says that this LiDAR imaging is consistent with what a drain commissioner engineering firm will look for or can use?
These are the two-foot contour, contours, and it's, it's the same, the RFPs were put, are gonna be put out by the state, and they all meet the same specifications, so if, if we have one done in Manistee County, and the bus up to Benzey County, then all the scales are gonna be the same, and so if a drainage district or like the Betsy River flows within both counties, everything is gonna be able to match. is going to be able to match up and be used from county to county. And it's all, all the specs are written by the state to, to meet the requirements that they need.
I think it's former RADAR really. It's, I don't know what the lie stands for, but, but DAR is, I think, I think it's RADAR or some sort of, it sort of bounces off the structure. So in his, in his PowerPoint presentation, you'd see like, there's a hill or something and then there's a little valley and you, it would, it would strike the land there, okay, and so you know that it's this high and then it strikes it here and you know that it's lower or so. So it's sort of like that, so it's real accurate in terms of, but, you know, elevation changes and things. But I think maybe we should ask the drain commissioner if this would suffice for, has anyone done that?
When I talked to Rob, well, the drain commissioner's here. When I talked to Rob, he's saying this is exactly what they're, what they're looking for.
Mr. Smith, do you agree with that?
This is exactly what I'm looking for, yeah.
Okay. I'll screen this.
Where are the funds coming from?
This would come, this would come from the aerial, air photo fund, which we have the funds available in there, which is really saving up for the next round of, of flying aerials because we still will have to fly aerials five or sixers, five, six years from now. So that could become an issue five or six years from now because we'll have eighteen thousand dollars less, but hopefully we can, some of this data that sold, if this, if this, if these LiDARS are sold, it'll go back into the air photo fund too. So hopefully we'll make up that money. This, I think, I'm going to say this a lot over the next few years, this is following your strategic plan. I think this is a way to help make the, the county more development ready, so.
We have a motion and we have a second on this.
Are we adding the verbiage about authorizing the share with the contract or is that going to be?
That's up to you. If you feel comfortable with that, then we're basically taking care of it.
Yeah, I made a motion to change that.
I'm on my, my second.
Your second, okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, human services did not meet.
I got, I got one more thing I just want to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll move right on, we'll accept the report then. It's just that Gordon said that when we do get your information back, he may be requesting two thousand dollars for upgrading our storage capacity. But that's not action item?
No.
With that, I'll make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, sorry about that. Human services did not meet. Uh, we only have about three minutes before our scheduled appointment, so is there anything? Green team, can they do that in three minutes?
Uh, on the green team?
I know the executive committee cannot, so I'm bypassing that. Green team?
Oh, yeah, on the green team, there were no items, no items requiring any board action. Ms. Archer's report is on there and through a meeting yesterday, we talked about recycling at the city and just whether it be an RFQ that comes out next year, that'll be something that we'll talk about in the green team Thursday. So at this time, I'll accept the green team's report, which is no action items, I guess.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Uh, it's just about ten thirty and at this time I would like to ask Mr. Jed Jaworski, Michigan State University Extension Firewise Field Assistant.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you today?
All right. Thanks for putting me on the agenda. In the interest of time, since the document I'm talking about is settling in somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and thirty pages, we'll use a PowerPoint to give you a, a sense of the, the content of the plan.
It's not opening.
Wrong.
It says there can't open the file. Do you want to try to recover one? Or is that not?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While they're looking at that, I just, I know there's no action item with the summit committee, but I think it was a very good.
Well, let's wait till we get a report. Oh, yeah, we're not done. Oh, yeah, we've got a lot more to go.
All right. Do we have a five-minute break?
Okay, let's give it a five-minute break here while they're setting up the cameras. Five-minute break? Yeah. They're trying to get the projector to work.
My apologies for the delay there. It wouldn't be the first technical problem that's plagued this particular project is it's a very digitally intensive plan. A real quick review for those of you who weren't here two years ago when the county adopted the, the community wildfire protection planning effort. This was funded through a federal money distributed via the state of Michigan, about fifteen thousand dollars to try to accomplish this plan over the course of two years. A pretty big project. One of the questions we wanted to answer is, does Manistee County have a wildfire threat? And even without research that was involved with this plan, we knew that, that was certainly the case. Like much of the nation, Manistee County is a fire-prone environment and all the models showing which way fire is going in our environment is saying we're going to be seeing a lot more fire in our world, in part because we've repressed it for a century and Mother Nature's trying to swing that pendulum back. Add climate change and development trends to that and we have a recipe for some very significant problems, which we're seeing everywhere, of course, across the, the nation, but we're going to be seeing more in our area as well. That's a Berry Lake fire there on the bottom, by the way. That was one that got away. We have eight to ten thousand wildfires per year in Michigan. You don't hear about most of them because your local fire departments are getting there quickly and they're suppressed while they're small. But what we really are failing to understand is the bigger picture of how we live in this fire-dependent ecosystem and we're not going to be able to continue to afford to eliminate fire from the environment. That battle is being lost no matter what state of the union you look at or what nation around the world. So we're having to come to a new understanding and we're going to have to learn how to live with fire and not continue to operate under this pretense of our being able to dominate or control fire. Just like we're used to wind, rain and snow, we're going to have to make our homes resistant to fire, just as they are to those elements as well. So the Healthy Forest Restoration Act passed in two thousand and three is a way for our nation to start to make this cultural shift towards fire in our environment. And the community wildfire protection planning is the most comprehensive way of doing this. And applying that at a county level while challenging is by far the best way to go. And here's some of the reasons why. It influences where and how federal agencies implement fuel reduction projects on federal lands and impact those communities around the federal lands. Well, obviously we have a tremendous amount of federal land in Manistee County. So being able as a local entity to have some authority and control over how Forest Service manages their lands is important for Manistee County.
Good question. On that fuel reduction activities, who, who gets the revenue from that? Is it local answers or you go back to the feds or what?
It depends on who, who owns that land, you know, that those timber resources are on.
Well, we got a lot of federal land here, so if it's federal, does you go back to the feds or is it state for the community?
Well, some of that, you know, if, if it's federally managed forest, I would assume that those funds from that timber sale would go into the federal coffers. However, a portion of those federal funds come back to the county in the form of Title Three monies, which are actually helping with this project and with implementing firewise in, in Manistee County. And to work on areas where maybe the Forest Service has no strategic interest in harvesting that timber, but that timber is providing a very real risk to a nearby community or a group of homes. This plan allows, having the CWPP plan approved in Manistee County allows Manistee County to say, we're fearful that these residents are being put at risk. And the Forest Service would be required then to, to manage that risk on behalf of the county's interests, even though they may not have an active timber interest in it.
Would there be an increase in the local funds that come back if there was timber sales on that land or would it be the same that we get? I think these are based on acres.
The answer is, that is yes.
Yes?
The answer is there'd be more secure rural schools money if there was more timber cutting at federal level. There's a lot of debate over that. Some people want a lot of timber cut, some don't. And so you, you make a decision every year on secure rural schools money and that's really what Jed is talking about is, is.
Can all those schools know what it comes to?
No. I mean, you actually take a reduction in your payment in lieu of taxes to allow townships and schools to get more money for roads and, and I think it was you that made the statement a few months ago when you approved this, that I hope townships know that you're, that we're doing this. And it's kind of a complicated formula that they sent to us and there's all kinds of things that go on. You make a decision every year to accept the average, there's two different, two different ways that it's done and.
I can talk to you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a goofy formula, but we fight every year for the secure rural schools money to be continued.
Having a county wildfire protection plan in your county and having identified at-risk communities in your county give you a much stronger seat at that table than having a conversation with many of the federal or state resource managers. Fifty percent of the U.S. Forest Service fuel reduction funds have to be spent in wildland urban interface areas as defined in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. There's prioritization of federal and state funds for those having CWPPs and it meets the national ten-year fire plan strategy.
What is WY then?
Wildland Urban Interface. And I'll show you a little bit, more about that in just a moment here. So, you know, in a nutshell, a CWPP can dramatically reduce wildfire risk, improve our preparedness for wildfire response, funding and support opportunities for local communities and our fire agencies. There's three things that have to be included in the CWPP and there's no budget one way or another on these. Collaboration, I think everybody's familiar with how that works. It's obviously a longer, a little harder road to hoe when you have to get everybody on the same page, but in the long run, that builds the partnerships that are necessary to make this plan work. Prioritize fuel reduction and then treatment of structural ignitability. If you're not familiar with those terms, prioritize fuel reduction is where you identify and then rank or prioritize hazardous fuels, as in wildland fuels, both on federal, state and non-federal lands, and then recommend some treatment. So as an example, if you have jackpine growing in and around your yard, we might say, be a good idea to replace those with a less volatile tree or let's prune those jackpines so that a grass fire can't ignite the tree. Prune that jackpine six or eight feet off the ground. The other is treatment of structural ignitability. Manistee County has a lot of old homes that are quite fire vulnerable. Obviously, a home, even a new home that has a wood shingled roof is going to be more likely to ignite in a wildfire than one that has a fire-resistant roof. So looking at the types of structures we have in the county and assessing how ignitable are these from a wildfire is part of this. Once we determine that level of ignitability, then we can make recommendations on what can be done to reduce that. And again, most of these things are not expensive or even time-consuming. They're pretty simple modifications that can be made to make a home.
So if you wanted your home checked out, you'd call the Forest Service, extension service?
Um, right now, myself or one of the other Firewise Field Assistants in concert with either a state fire officer or your local fire department would make an onsite visit. Is there a charge for that? There isn't at this time, no. Again, it can be as simple as just putting a little cover on your gutters to stop the pine needles or leaves from laying in that gutter. So when that spark from the wildfire lands in the roof, rolls down into the gutter, then there's nothing in there for it to catch fire. So as a result of our initial planning process, we reduced some of the, the goals that were in the initial grant application down to these. Protect life property, natural resources from destructive wildfires. Obviously, we have wildfires that are not destructive, that are actually beneficial to the environment and Forest Service and the state light a lot of those throughout the course of a year, called a prescription fire to improve our forest or wildland areas. And then we have a reduced potential for structural wildland ignitions, reduce hazardous fuel loads, create defensible space. Defensible space, referenced is a word. Your fire department needs a safe place to defend the home. You can't ask your local neighbor volunteer firefighter to risk his life driving up a driveway he would never get out of if that fire got around that house or to put himself in a position that is going to be unsafe to defend the home or impractical. Increase our local capacity for response to wildfire emergencies. This is across the board. It's at the Emergency Operations Center with our emergency planner, it's with our local fire departments, it's with our township officials. Promote, develop programs, get that wildfire awareness and prevention word out there. We've been doing that in Manistee County now for about four years, quite effectively. Encourage economic development in the community. Obviously, if there's going to be revenue spent on fuels mitigation or fixing up homes to make them less ignitable, let's try to keep that money available in, in our area. And then improve forest health. So there's been a lot of steps in the process. Suffice to say, the two years have gone very quickly because some of these steps are pretty, pretty monumental. Some of the ones that we thought were going to be very challenging, like doing our GIS mapping work, ended up to be quite easily done because we had people like Rob and some state and federal people who are very good in GIS and, and that came together very well. Other areas where we thought we were going to be able to move very easily ended up being very problematic, like getting our sort of boots-on-the-ground hazard assessments in each of the townships. So this process has taken the better part of two years. And it all boils down to, you know, preparing our communities for what we inevitably know is going to happen, a large and uncontrollable wildfire threatening a community. The way we've worked the plan is to have a core working group. The working group varies in size, anywhere from three or four people on up to fourteen, fifteen people, depending on the task we're trying to tackle. There are local people that are available on short notice and this has been the bulk of the folks that have really focused on, on getting the meat and potatoes under the plan together. And we have a larger consulting group called the Advisory Group. These are people that might have some specific expertise in a particular area that would inform the plan or are familiar with the neighborhood and the township that we're not. And what we're doing in the Firewise program, what we do is kind of work on the bottom in the blue area of this flow chart here, where we're looking at individual homes, small neighborhoods. Now that we're working at the county wildfire protection level, you see that we're looking at all these much larger and oversweeping areas that are going to impact our ability to deal with fire. So there were a lot of important decisions to be made very early in the process as to how we were going to do our evaluations, but we didn't have any in-house expertise in this and quite frankly, the state and the feds didn't do a very good job of guiding this process. State of Michigan doesn't even offer a, a manual or any online resources. A lot of the people they applied to the project were moving along in their career ladders or transferring out to other areas, so we had very little consistency. So we, we kind of went through the school of hard knocks, but we knew that we had to get out there and identify these three areas. Our wildland urban interface where our built environment butts a largely wildland environment. What we call a wildland intermix where we have homes smattered in wooded, flammable areas and we see a lot of this throughout the county. And then what's called the isolated interface where you see a two-track coming out on M-55 and you have no idea how far back that house is, could be a mile. There may be only one home back there. And then we had also the challenges of scale. We had to assess hazards not only at the individual building level, but we also had to look at, at communities and subdivisions and, and, and communities in their entirety. And training our fire departments and volunteers to, to assess with these, all these variables of scale was also very challenging. And once we get that done, we still have to work all of that into a matrix. In other words, how much of the priority are we going to put on things like a wooden roof versus a driveway that isn't wide enough for a fire truck to get up or no address at the end of the drive? All these things, you know, require sort of weighing out. And this is kind of our, our general weighing overlay. This is what is informing the bulk of our mapping and hazard assessment for, for Manistee County. And it's based on the kind of threats we have. Every community wildfire protection plan will define these differently. So this is the countywide weight percentages. When we went into the individual communities, this changed a little bit. One of the examples that is frequently is like in Brethren. They were really concerned that their little museum not be threatened by wildfire and so they put a much higher priority on community essential infrastructure and community values at risk because they were way more worried about that museum. at risk because they were way more worried about that museum burning than they were any of the timber resources around the community. But in the end, you have to work it out in an average for the countywide. Then, once we get that countywide average worked out, that's where Rob does his magic in the planning office and takes all this data and crunches it into a geospatial form where we can work this information into maps. And then those maps will inform not only where our risks are, but a lot of the priorities and directions that this plan can take. Unfortunately, this is where we hit our first big bump in the road. We just thought that our local fire departments would be able to find somebody to attend a one-hour training on how to assess these resources and get out there because they know the neighborhood so well and create a base map for their township with a high, medium, and low risk model. So, you can see, we did not have participation by four of our townships. Cleon came in at the very last minute, but there were some problems with, even though we've gone up there to try to give him the training a number of times, they kind of missed the mark on, on the procedure, but they, they will be in the mix here shortly. So, we wanted to have this local knowledge, boots on the ground assessment as our base map. We didn't quite get there with that. So, we had to use state and federal maps and our own driving around these townships to try to build in the, the missing data as best we could. We also had to identify those wildland urban interface, interzone, and intermix areas and that was done on this map. We needed to know what types of flammable natural vegetation was on the landscape and that was done through these types of maps. The county was able to provide a map showing where every well was in the county and that's the closest thing we have to an address or structural index. We can pretty much assume where every, there's a well, there's going to be a building. So here's where the buildings are throughout the county. So now, if you overlay all of that, you overlay the buildings with the most flammable vegetation types, which of course are the pine forests, and the areas that were assessed as high by our fire departments' boots on the ground, then you start to see this convergence in this overlay map. So the areas in red are those which have the high risk conifer forests combined. The areas in yellow are areas that were assessed as high risk and the green is the conifer forest that for whatever reason did not get assessed as particularly high risk. So this, that's kind of ground truth, some of what we've been experiencing on the ground, but also tells us where we might want to go to start to look at some places that are going to be at risk that we may or may not have missed in our walk about the county.
Red was very high and yellow was high, is that...
Red is high, yellow is moderate, and green is low. So here's another type of layering that also informs our CWPP process. This is an aspect map overlaid with our conifer forests, overlaid with structures that intersect in the, in the conifer forests. So, obviously, any slope that faces south or southwest is going to experience a lot of preheating from the sun and a lot of usually are prevailing winds are from that direction. So these are the areas that are going to catch fire first after a rain or when we get into a drought. They're going to be the most volatile. So again, now we can see what homes and what conifer forests are on those deep southwest slopes and those are areas that we're going to want to pay particularly close attention. Then we can start layering other things. Here's every gas and oil well site in the county. You certainly want to know where those meet high-risk areas. We also want to know where we can find water. We have maps showing not only every fire hydrant in every township in the county, but every surface water supply source that's available seasonally or non-seasonally. And then we ground truth a lot of this with the aerial surveys so we can see exactly where structures are, roads, and make sure that what, you know, showed up on perhaps an older map or that that forty acres of red pine is still standing where we thought it was. We also then have to take in some information about what kind of buildings and how many people are living in and around these risk areas. So, we had to do profiles on communities and work that into the plan. So with all that said and done, here's what it boiled out to. And because this has been particularly challenging for Manistee County and the state is, is new at this as well. There's only a few CWPPs statewide. We actually coined a new term that I think will likely stick and be a part of these plans going down the road from here, but an elevated fire risk community is an area of risk that does not meet the state's threshold for, for basically labeling a township at risk. Here's the problem. Out west, you can choose any community you want as long as it has some level of governance, no matter what the size, and, and call that an at-risk community. Michigan has taken a different approach. They've said that an at-risk community has to have an official form of government and so the lowest or smallest form of government is the smallest area you can declare an at-risk community. Well, in case in point, Arcadia. Arcadia is not an incorporated community. It's governed by the township. And then we have a small portion of Arcadia, Burnham and Starkey Point that are deemed at risk. It's a high level of risk. The rest of Arcadia Township is the only township in the county that's labeled low risk. So, the lowest form of government is Arcadia Township. Do we declare all of Arcadia Township an at-risk township just because of that small area? The state said no. Even though we made the policy that we foresee to do that, we don't agree. And so we asked, well then what should we do? Because we have to recognize this at-risk community. So, the term elevated fire risk community was coined. It doesn't bring quite the recognition in terms of federal recognition, but it will be recognized by the state.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Go back to that last one. What, what dictates them being an elevated risk community? Would it be lack of fire plugs or would it be because of trees in, in forestry in a specific area?
It's a combination of all these things, yeah. And that's one of the things that's eaten up a lot of time with this plan is that the state wants to see all this worked out mathematically. So again, you know, we have to take that, okay, how much, if we got a hundred percent to, to spend in getting this determination, what percent of that one hundred is going to be dedicated to flammable roofs? What percent is going to be dedicated to volatile wildland fuels? What percent is going to be dedicated to the fire department being a long ways away and there not being any water? And we, all that eventually has to add up to equal one hundred percent to make this threshold. And so, at Portage Point, it's going, not going to be heavy fuel loading because there the risk is all from beach grass. There's very little heavy fuel loading, but it's structural ignitability from that beach grass and difficulty of fire department access and water resources that, that got it to that threshold.
So that's what Harbor Village on the map is beach grass?
Yes. Yeah. And there'll be a couple of slides here. I can show you a little more about that. These are the areas that are labeled at risk. Wellston, Dublin, Stronach, Norman Township and Bearlake Township. Wellston and Dublin, again, they're, they're not the smallest unit of government, but these were fed federally designated before the state made their policy, so we are including them in, in this, this rating. So, these are pre-existing, federally recognized at-risk areas. So, let's take a quick look at them. Burnham, going south to Starkey Point. It's a pine, oak intermix. A lot of the access roads are too narrow and unsafe for fire equipment to get down. A lot of tall grass that will carry a ground fire to the next cache of flammable, larger fuels.
And that last slide, were those planted trees or really...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Starkey Point is the unique distinction of having only one way in and one way out. It's not wide enough for fire equipment to come in as, as residents are evacuating and there's flashy, highly flammable fuels on both sides of the road. Prevailing west-southerly winds are going to take that fire right on up that stretch of beach there and make it very difficult for, for fire resources to get in and people to get out. Add to that, that beach grass fuel loading goes from the beach right on up into the community and integrates with it. You can see there's plenty of additional fuel loading in forms of walkways and decks. A lot of flammable litter between the homes. The homes have a minimal sideline setback, so one home on fire is going to ignite the next home on fire, especially when you put that wind in off Lake Michigan. This is a disaster waiting to happen out in some areas of Starkey Point. And then you've got the, the ignition potential. You know, you could say, well, where's a fire going to start on the Lake Michigan beach? There's no power lines. There's no vehicles driving up and down the road, but we have, of course, fireworks and beach fires, which has been difficult to regulate. You know, this is one of the few signs I found on the, on the county shoreline asking for beach fire safety and you can see that a hundred feet from this sign, I counted eight fires outside the one ring. And so, an eight to one ratio of non-compliance is not good. So Harbor Village, same, same sort of thing. We have a public beach downwind of Harbor Village that has no posted ordinance with regard to fireworks or signs. It just says, follow the city ordinance, but it doesn't describe that the city ordinance controls fire on, on the beach. So you've got a ready area that a fire can start and run the full gamut along that shoreline there. And not only does the beach grass come up to the, to the houses and decks, but between these are planted these flam... This is a small one. There's huge clusters of pines and then, you know, plant the pine next to the gas meters and there's some potential for experience there. And again, it's a, you know, it's a small area. You know, it's not going to threaten the city of Manistee, but it's going to make for a really exciting day for the Manistee Fire Department when they have a fast-moving beach fire come into that community there. The fire will never get past that, that road. It will only impact those beach-facing homes, but that's going to be a handful. When we look at some townships like Stronach, we don't have a high-density development. It's more of that urban, or the interzone and isolated interzone and a lot of really flammable fuel types. This is like the, the perfect mix because you've got the jackpine, which is a tree Mother Nature is made to burn. It is totally fire-dependent plant. It'll do anything it can to catch itself on fire. And it's mixed with oak, which the oak leaves are waxy and thick and they lay on the ground, dry out very readily. And that carries a very hot, intense ground fire. And when there's wind blowing in, those oak leaves like to whirl around and loft up in the air and spread the fire quite readily. So, that's why the entire township has got, you know, that at-risk designation. Brethren is interesting in that it doesn't have fuel loading around the community, but rather the risk of fire in Brethren is from within the community because there's so much unmoed grass. People, people there have a more natural landscape around their homes and they all, they have no fire regulation in the community. So consequently, everybody has a burn barrel, a fire ring, and a debris burning pile. I mean, literally, three fire sources in every yard. And then all around that are things that can catch fire, including the neighbors' homes and campers and boats and things. So, there's just a, you know, an awareness level thing that needs to happen in Brethren. They're doing a good job of self-policing there according to the fire chief, but certainly there's the potential for trouble. Calva's the exact opposite. Lot of mowed green lawns. There isn't going to be a fire problem in Calva proper, but the industrial park abuts heavy pine areas and the pines come into the industrial park, but there, most of those industrial buildings are metal. There isn't a lot of, and most of them are empty right now as well, so there's no fuel loading in terms of products or vehicles stored around the buildings. But we do have homes around Calva that can be impacted by the heavy fuel loading around the community. Then we have these interzone homes. They're not necessarily a part of a larger at-risk community with heavy fuel loading or whatnot, but there's clusters of two, three, four, five, six homes around an old red pine plantation or something like this where clearly that house would be extremely vulnerable in even a grass fire. And then we have these isolated interzone homes. This is up in the northeast corner of the county. This is all jackpine. There's a really nice home built on a hill up there, but again, fire goes uphill faster. This is the most flammable field we have in Michigan. No fire department would, in clear conscience, send anybody up that driveway to try to defend that home. That's a home that's going to be written off. The only thing that's going to save homes like that from this type of fate is adopting the FireWise principles that the plan promotes. So, you know, we've been working on that in Manistee County for a number of years. Hopefully, this wildfire protection plan will help raise awareness of how important adopting those principles are because now people will be able to actually see their risks specifically at the community level. So we also had to evaluate how well our fire department resources countywide, including the emergency operations center, in other words, our total county capacity to respond to fire. How well can we do that? What kind of equipment do we have? What kind of training? So, we had to consider all of this in the plan as well. So we inventoried every fire department and we came up with some interesting information, like thirty-two percent of your county firefighters have training for wildland urban interface or wildland fires. It's pretty, it's a pretty small amount given that a large percent of their calls are to wildland type incidences.
So what's happening with that? Are they increasing the training for wildfire?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll get to that here in a minute. Here's the percent of personnel that have the proper equipment to respond to these types of fires because it's quite actually dangerous to send somebody to a wildfire wearing heavy rubber boots and structural turnout gear. You need a lighter weight breathable materials. These are the percent of people that actually have tools to be able to fight a wildland fire. And here, we're looking a little bit better in the county. These are the percent of the, the fire departments that have wildland engines. And that eight percent is acceptable because city fire, you know, doesn't really require a wildland apparatus. These are the fire departments that have some type of other equipment that could be readily utilized for a wildland fire event. And eighty-three percent of the fire departments are expressing needs for wildfire, either in terms of training or equipment. So, there's plenty of work to be done in terms of responding to the fire department's needs in the county. And I might add that Stronach Fire Department never got us an inventory of their equipment. They're in such chaos right now, I guess with leadership and whatnot, that they didn't even get into this particular study despite repeated calls and emails. So it just goes to show that, you know, there's a lot going on with the county fire departments that, that need to be recognized and some suggestions made for improvements. We also looked at, specifically at each department's training. So here's, as an example, Dixon Fire Department. They're not high in terms of number of members, but they have an adequate force and they're all very adequately trained. But these are firefighters who work alongside Forest Service firefighters quite, quite frequently over the last decades and they understand and value that kind of training and it's the kind of fires they're responding to. So they've met that demand by getting their people properly trained. Here we're looking at Maple Grove where you see they have way more people on the fire department, but they are not as well-prepared to deal with a wildland or urban interface incident. And here we're looking at how well-equipped the departments are. You know, Dixon, they operate without fire shelters. They still wear their big clunky rubber boots and they've got a few other pieces of equipment that they can avail there. And here is looking at Manistee Township where they have, you know, enough equipment for a small contingent of their, their fire department. And we also looked at how, how's the leadership in these fire departments? Do they have their officer positions filled? Do they have a fire prevention officer to start to work more proactively with the issues that are coming up in the, in the county? So, with that all said, the plan is almost glued together. We really wanted to get you an electronic copy of the full plan, but we're having challenges getting that electronically assembled. We had some software issues because so many people worked on this plan on different computers with different vintages of software. When it came time to put it all together in one document, we found we had a lot of issues. So, Michigan State University Extension Traverse City is availing some of their more affordable expertise in this area to try to get the document assembled so that it's in one piece and still small enough to email around because the state requires it to be an emailable-sized document. So these are the three things that have to happen yet. All the applicable local governments have to, have to say, we're, we're good to go with this plan, local fire departments, and then the state entity responsible for forest management. So that's going to be both the DNR and then as a courtesy, we're also having the US Forest Service review and, and sign off on the plan. We've already met with the fire chiefs and Ron Gatauski will sign on behalf of the, of the Manistee County Fire Fighters Association. But I'm here today because of timing issues. We have to have this thing in to the state. We're already on a thirty-day extension. The states looked at the draft. They've approved the draft. They sent us back to, to get, get the witch's broom, you might say, and change our, our weighting matrices and, and deal with this issue of the, of the difference between an at-risk community and a, a elevated fire risk community. So, we've almost got all this done. Didn't get enough done to give you a final copy in advance of today's meeting and I apologize for that. But today we need to try to have you folks say, yes, we agree with the content of this plan and we want to see it get down to the state and get approved and, and get Tom reimbursed for the money that's been spent. Yeah.
Would that be the voting on this resolution at the end here?
Yes, that would be my request and I've attached a, a sample resolution, the language at which is entirely allowable. But we need, we need to empower this thing so that at the end of the month, it can go to Lansing to have the director, the DNR review it and approve it as well. If we wait till your next meeting, then we will simply have missed the, the opportunity for, for getting this approved. And it's, you know, it has been monumental. It didn't go... It didn't go perfectly. Wexford County bailed on theirs. They also signed up for-- there were five counties tried to tackle this. Wexford bailed. They sent the money back and get the bullet on what they had spent. Oceana County gave up doing it in-house like we did and ended up hiring a private contractor to come in and do the plan 11th hour. It is formidable, and this is the first one that Rob and I had done. Ken over at the EOC, I don't think he saw what was coming either. He was quite overwhelmed by it, and quite frankly, wanted to throw in the towel. But we felt, Rob and I felt, we had done enough work and that work had enough integrity to where we could pull this plan together 11th hour, because it is an important document for the county. It's not the kind of thing that's-- this is never the type of thing that's finished and sits on the shelf. What this is, is really just getting us to the point where we get this designation so that we can access more funds and resources, and we finally have a framework to start building our capacity to manage fire risk in Manistee County and keep our population safe. That's really what it boils down to. People are living in areas that they don't know are unsafe. And I think it's beholden of the local units of government to inform their citizens about that risk and some of the things they can do about it. And some of the more contentious issues, should we put language in local ordinances about fire protection and that kind of thing? That isn't mandated in the plan. It could be suggested in the plan under the action items where we say, "Okay, you might want to consider putting another sign up about beach fires. You might want to consider a local ordinance that puts some level of control over fires or fireworks in some of these areas." But that's, again, for local decision-makers. It's not for the plan authors to make. All this gives us is a framework for that discussion to happen. So there's really nothing contentious in the plan in terms of the state, the federal, or the county coming into the townships or fire departments and say, "Boy, you better do it this way." As an example, those townships that didn't get their assessment work done in the action plans, it simply suggests that that get done. And if the fire department does not have the time or the money or the resources to get that plan done, then we'll look at some other options for how that can happen, whether it's a private contractor or whether that township chooses to, next time they negotiate their contract for fire protection, if it only says that they're paying for fire suppression, maybe their next contract should say that they want fire prevention services from their contract fire service provider as well.
I need to tell you that, I need to let you know, I got involved in this in kind of the 12th, the last hour to try to get this thing done, because it wouldn't have been done had it not been for Jed and Rob to some extent. We lost the ability-- Jed mentioned earlier, there was a $15,000 grant. We were only able to get some of Rob's cost back, about $3,900, if I remember right. We just received that check. We deposited it. The rest of that $15,000 grant was lost. We did not, we aren't going to get any of Jed's money back. The good portion, part of, the good news on that is that we can use Secure Rural Schools' money--
--
--to pay for some of Jed's time, because Jed kind of got involved in this full-time in the last few weeks only. And so, I'm not going to lie to you, and I don't want you to think that we had that $15,000 grant. Those days are past. We were, we did not have Jed working on the plan very much at that time, and I was very concerned, because we also paid Jed to be a firewise field assistant. We pay him through Secure Rural Schools. And then there was this grant. And when it came time to start sending hours to the state for Jed's time, I was very concerned about audits down the road and double-dipping out of the state grant and then also out of the Secure Rural Schools funding. So we did not submit any of Jed's hours. We will, I mean, since that time, he's worked a significant number of hours on this, and we'll use Secure Rural Schools' money for that, because that's eligible. But we lost about $11,000 of grant.
It's my hope that, because we were successful in rallying 11th hour, and the state has been impressed by our efforts and the quality of our work, this next round of funding, instead of funding five counties for CWPPs, they're going to fund something like three counties. The remainder of that money is coming back to the areas that have established their CWPPs to do further work.
The reason I got involved is because at the end, at the, when this started to become a real problem, getting this done in time, there was some thought to not finish it, to just forget about it. And Jed, I think, convinced me that we need to get this done, because the state of Michigan, we're going to basically not get, we're going to be put at the bottom of the list if we don't get this done. So I kind of tried to play a little bit of a referee role, I guess, in trying to get this done, and Jed and Rob and Ken Falk, to some extent, did a lot of things to get this, to get this thing to you today.
You didn't use any general fund expenditure money?
There was no general fund money.
Yeah, so it was a--
Yeah. I wish it would have went a little bit differently than the way it went, but--
So this doesn't empower any regulatory authority to anyone by now approving this plan, right?
No, no. You know, there are, again, it creates, it basically sets the table for people to come together and start to talk about how things can work better, including this type of large-scale emergency planning. Manistee County has some challenges. I participated in the exercises to try to gear up for a large catastrophic event at the airport. And all of those planning efforts and those actual full-scale drills show some real problems. And when we kicked this project off, those kinds of problems came up again. And so, we're seeing in all these areas where we're trying to do large-scale emergency preparedness, we're seeing these same problems pop up. So that's a larger, longer discussion, but we know that we need to help that EOC be able to do a better job of coordinating emergency response and helping to fire departments and townships communicate and establish workable relationships and plans that keeps our citizens safe. So yes, there are no mandates, but it's asking people to start to come together to resolve the problems, and it starts to identify where some of those challenging areas are. And it also identifies those areas where we're doing really well.
I think it's a good idea, and I think it's important. What are you going to do? What are the first steps if the plan's approved, state and everybody? What are your first steps? What are you going to do?
The action plans, I can't give you the exact number of action plans. Right now, we're about 36, because all those action plans had to be rewritten when the state asked for the designations to be changed. Things got to be prioritized. But of all those action plans, they are ranked high, medium, and low in terms of urgency. So as an example, high on the list is getting Oneckama Township and Cleon and Bear Lake, get that baseline assessment finished so that we have that apples-and-apples comparison with all the townships. Some of, like at Starkey Point, getting that awareness level to those citizens so that they know they have a problem. We've already started that. Their Home Association Board received firewise packets. The fire department addressed the township board. The township board's already voted to change the sideline setback requirements on Starkey Point. So some things are in process. Other things will be recommended down the road.
How about training the equipment for the fire department?
That's probably what's going to happen, is the Firefighters Association and the Fire Chiefs Association doesn't have the kind of information that I just showed you. I mean, they've never done that. And so I think it's kind of a wake-up call for them, too. And I can see that, based on their initial response from that data, they're already thinking about, instead of looking at individual fire department needs, starting to take that change in mindset, which we are recommending, to create a cohesive countywide firefighting force that can be coordinated through the EOC as opposed to the sort of the Norman-Rockwell model of every town having their little fire department that they're all proud of, and they help to fund it through pancake breakfast and stuff. And you know that our friends in Arcadia will always show up if we have a fire in Bear Lake and vice versa, and we're going to play baseball and all that. And that's the way it's worked for a long time. But that won't work when it comes to a wildfire that's threatening three townships at the same time and where they have to integrate with state and federal firefighters, and there has to be unified command. And so that reality, we're kind of, to coin an old phrase, you know, old school, loose school kind of thing. Ever since 9/11, the federal government, the state government, want us to do things differently locally, and it's shown that there's good cause for that. So we're going to help some of these small rural fire departments meet that challenge of equipping themselves and training themselves to be part of a cohesive countywide firefighting force that, quite frankly, might have to be available to Mason County or Benzie County in a wildfire event as well. So what the state and the federal government is looking at is how to make all these firefighting forces sort of equal and accountable and prepared.
I think what's important is, by adopting this plan, if you will, any grants become available, or even if we have the right grants, looking for more equipment or anything. That gives us points by having this plan adopted, basically.
Absolutely.
As opposed to another county that hasn't done anything yet.
Correct. In fact, there's a lot of those funds that are earmarked. They are only for areas with CWPPs. And if you have an at-risk community in a countywide CWPP, that elevates you even more. And that's why we refuse to back down on areas like Starkey Point when it came into negotiations with the state, because we felt those communities needed that recognition. And even though it doesn't give quite as significant a funding opportunities, it gets them on that, and they're still part of the countywide CWPP, so they will be able to access expertise and resources.
I can tell you that, and I think Mr. Hilliard would agree, that if it weren't for our casino and the 2% local revenue sharing dollars, those statistics that Jed showed you a little while ago would have been worse, a lot worse. Those, we have among the best equipment around. Now, for wildfires, I don't know, but our equipment countywide for fire departments is excellent compared to many areas.
And that's one of the things that's also, a recommendation is, our inventory was strictly to meet the federal requirements of typing our fire resources for wildland purposes. But we're going to take that a step further. We've already actually got a lot of the data. We just haven't put it in there yet. So we're going to know what make-year mod of fire apparatuses in every fire department. That way, if the county fire chief wants to know, "What's the average age of our Manistee County fire equipment?", we can tell them, "What's the oldest truck? What's the newest truck?" So that'll be useful information to help--
Even though we're a long way from a unified township-fire department system, like Jed mentioned, I think, I see, when I look at revenue-sharing grants coming in, that townships are starting to work together a little bit more with their grant. We can share this. If you give us this grant, we'll share this amongst all the township. We're getting there. It's a slow process, but we're getting there.
Kind of want both, the best of both worlds. We still like our fire departments to be sources of local pride, part of our local communities, reflect our local needs. But we also need that local force to be well-trained and capable of integrating on a larger scale when a wildfire event or a large-scale disaster challenges us.
For one, I think this is very impressive, the work you guys have done, especially in late in the game, to amass that kind of information. But I also want to qualify that, too. The Forest Service has been closing roads for years. That's one thing. The other thing of it is, every time you try to get a timber cut anymore, it always winds up going through the court system, trying to get timber cut. So we are growing our problem. We're not trying to minimize it. We're growing the problem. I heard a statistic from Congressmen this last weekend that we actually have more wood rotting in the woods now than we actually are hibernating. And all that stuff, you're talking about building fuel sources. There's two ways to manage the resource. Either you cut it, or it's going to burn, one or the other. I mean, there's probably some advantages to both. But we are not getting rid of wood that we have the capacity to harvest either. And that's an ongoing issue. We're not going to solve it.
The way the CWPP affects that issue is that it gives the local units of government, county, township, even citizens groups, a voice and a place at the table to talk about that very issue, where it's been challenging for people to do that before. And it also gives the Forest Service a way to respond more quickly once that local information and decisions have been made. As an example, it doesn't let them get around Environmental Protection Act, but if there's a timber cut that's proposed because it's threatening, let's say Dublin, and the Forest Service agrees, "Okay, we're going to take that, scan it out, and because Dublin's a tourist area, we're not going to clear cut it. We agree to maintain our aesthetics," and all these things need to get worked out and washed. But they will experience expediated need of compliance because the community is at risk. So there's some benefits for the Forest Service, too, in that they'll be able to respond much faster. Their hands are a little bit less bound by federal compliance if they're dealing with issues that are in the county that has a CWPP. So that will help to expedite those kinds of decisions you're talking about.
This is why we didn't let Jed speak for 10 minutes at the regional summit.
Exactly. That's fine. Thank you. So with that, there's some language here that can be simplified. I felt it was important, particularly that, in addition to adopting the plan, that you also ask your citizenry to participate with the plan. And one of the first steps will be getting this plan on the county website so that everyday folks can access it, as well as resource managers, emergency planners. So I consider that a pretty important aspect of the resolution, because, again, we don't want this thing to just go park on the shelf somewhere. It's got to be a process that stays in motion.
I would like to hear a little bit from Mr. Carson here, just a brief, as to how you think this plan is put together.
In terms of collaboration and everything? We started out on a really strong foot, I would say, over a year ago, and then things started to fall apart at the seams with a few different fire districts. Not really sure why. I don't have a very good answer to that. There was plenty of outreach. There just wasn't the response. They provided plenty of resources in terms of map documents for my department to be able to actually inventory the low, moderate, and high-risk areas, and then those maps just disappeared or weren't worked on. A lot of the GIS work was completed last winter in terms of, like, the digitizing and the creating of the high-risk areas and so forth. And then the final modeling was completed in the last month and a half. We had about a three-to-five-month period where we didn't have any meetings going on between the Steering Committee and, I don't want to place blame anywhere, but that caused the planning process to slow down a little bit. And then a few individuals seemed to lose interest, because when we started having Steering Committee meetings, again, we had even further falloff from participation in terms of fire districts and so forth. So in the end, the modeling and the plan itself came together, and we're fairly accurate in terms of, the data I provided to Jed, he actually went out and ground-proofed in the field, and the modeling worked. It identified the areas that were high-risk, moderate-risk, and low-risk, and identified the locations of potential homes that were susceptible to wildland fire. I think, in terms of what I'm going to do, and Jed's making a great point about, this isn't a document that needs to sit on the shelf, as none of our plans should sit on the shelf. There are some, well, there's going to be some data that's going to be available here in the not-too-distant future. I'm working on address point data right now and identifying what those addresses are to a power meter or to a structure, if it's a home, or if it's an accessory building and so forth. And so we'll be able to hone in even further in terms of exact structure locations based on addresses. And so we'll add that into the plan and pull out the residential well data. As soon as we can get the data from Cleon, Oneckama, Bear Lake, and Norman Townships, I'll be digitizing that data, and then we can rework the modeling so that we can incorporate all of those communities as well. There is going to be, there's a software extension that the department's going to be purposing soon, and we are going to, well, be creating a new land cover layer for the county in the next year. So that'll identify, the land cover data I was using was about 10 years old. So some of those forest stands have been cut. And so a new land cover layer will identify where we have evergreen versus deciduous trees and so forth.
Also, an important aspect of Rob's work is, think how powerful these mapping tools would be in the EOC as you're sitting there-- tools would be in the EOC as you're sitting there trying to manage a wildland event when you can see what communities are in the way of the path of the fire, where water resources are. Until the time we get laptops and fire trucks, the EOC is in a great position to utilize the power of Rob's work and his plan. And so one of the recommendations is for the EOC to get a software adaption so that they have the benefit of using the plan, the maps.
Exactly. If we had some sort of emergency or disaster that took place in the county, I'm the backup public information officer with Tom Kaminski and I need to be at the EOC in that case. If we need any mapping capability accomplished, I'm not going to be able to do it because the only software application is on my computer in my office and all the data is available only to that computer. So if I'm in the EOC, there's no way that I can work through any of the mapping processes and at this public information officer. So a recommendation is to get an ARC license for a computer in the EOC so I have all my data there. So if something occurs, I can be in the EOC creating maps and then as the fire departments are able to have laptop computers in the fire engines, we can actually create maps and instantaneously send those directly to the fire department. So there's a potential in the future if we have wildland fire, we can map out the location of every single structure, put contour lines on there, what the vegetation is, and provide aerials and send them directly to firefighters in the field instantaneously.
Now, if this resolution is not passed, then it dies here at the table, correct? Or do we need to, are there other ways to go around that?
I don't see any other way around and that the state has given us an extension and that's the limits of their ability. The director has to have this, especially if you want to get the check too for the reimbursement of funds that have been spent. But to rest your conscience, you know, the State Department of Natural Resources Fire Division has reviewed the draft plan that was submitted to them in hard copy and they felt it met the threshold and, you know, the additional things they asked for, we've done in terms of working through that modeling matrix for our at-risk communities. So I think the state will be pleased with the work and it certainly is on par and beyond some of the other plans we've seen in the areas.
I'm very confident that you'll be very satisfied with this plan. I haven't read it, but I just know the amount of work that Jed and others have done on this with sometimes not as much information as they could have had had everyone participated.
Okay, next on the agenda is whether or not you want to vote on the resolution.
Do I have a motion to?
I would need a motion, yes.
I'll take, I'll make the motion to adopt the Community Wildfire Protection Plan as written. I don't know if you want to read the whole plan here or not.
So you want to adopt that resolution?
The resolution, yes.
We'll put a number to that resolution. I think it's probably 16 or something like that.
I think 17 because 16 is the remod.
Okay.
A second, Jim.
You second it? Does it need to be read?
Pardon?
Yeah, you think it needs to be read?
I don't, I don't.
Already read?
Unless you're there for the audience, you can go ahead.
Very good, then, end of discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for all your work. Okay, right on time. Next on the agenda, Mr. Irvin and Tamara Poswinka, Alliance for Economic Success, updating our strategic plan.
This is the fastest.
Don't the first guy take one reason?
I don't.
It's a great plan.
Did you say a five-minute break?
No, I did not.
What, do we need a five-minute break?
Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break.
Here to give the presentation of the first-ever Manistee County Board of Commission Strategic Plan. My name is Tamara Poswinka. Work for Alliance for Economic Success and this is Tim Irvin from the Alliance for Economic Success. And we had the pleasure of working with you and the rest of the county in preparing this strategic plan. So why don't we get to it? So why do you prepare a strategic plan? Well, a strategic plan helps you identify and unify around priorities and actions. And then by doing that, you're also communicating the vision and your mission and goals that were developed during the strategic planning process. And you also understand, evaluate, and update your progress over time. So that plan is implemented, it's making traction, and things are getting done in the county.
The strategic planning process that the county board used is a fairly typical one. We began by working with you to confirm your values and values are an important thing because they're the thing that guides your decision and when you have a judgment call, you always have your values to fall back on to help guide those decisions. You also, as part of that process, developed a vision and mission statement that we'll review. At the same time, we sought extensive and diverse stakeholder input that you considered as part of this process and used all of the input from you as well as the stakeholders to develop goals, strategies, and action plans. So that you have now adopted this plan and we will be moving into the implementation phase and having an annual process to review and update the plan where needed. The stakeholder meetings, again, this is a partial list. We have meetings in all of your districts. We also met with key constituency groups ranging from manufacturers to local officials, the chamber, DDAs, the hospital, Little River Band, and many others. I think the thing that we want to emphasize on your behalf is that you welcome input on the strategic plan at any time and people can pull down the full strategic plan by going to your website or by contacting Mr. Kaminski's office to get a copy. Again, values are really important as they've been stated because they do say who you are and help guide the decisions that you make. And you've identified a set of very strong values having to do with ethical behavior, fiscal responsibility, continuous improvement, collaboration, which was a theme throughout your plan of working in partnership with others, listening to stakeholders, and again, back to your point of seeking public input, stakeholder input at any time with respect to the strategic plan. Transparency in actions and decisions, obviously very important. Natural resources, there's no way to overstate the importance of that to the county, and fair treatment of employees. You also work long and hard at coming up with these words, which reflect a vision for the county that Manistee County and its many stakeholders are unified around strategies and plans that create places and opportunities that attract family, businesses, jobs, and visitors, supporting a consistent upward trend in the county's prosperity. So in this vision statement, you have reflected the ideal state for Manistee County and it's a powerful one. You also establish a mission statement and this mission statement describes what the county board does and must do to attain the vision that you've established. Through leadership, collaboration, and forward-looking decisions, programs, and services, the Manistee County Board of Commissioners directs resources and creates an environment that achieves prosperity throughout Manistee County. And again, in your discussions, you underscored how important it was to create an environment that is conducive to prosperity, one that calls upon the resources and abilities of everyone unified around a plan for the county. We also felt that it was important in this strategic plan that you clarify exactly what the county board of commissioners oversees and whether you work for a large agency or a small agency, there are oftentimes questions about what exactly are their roles and responsibilities and I think that this will go a long way in clarifying that for the county board. Without reading through all of these, some of the highlights are that you set annually a county budget, you seek funding, you set taxation policy, you make appointments to a large number of bodies that are very significant to the county. You provide and maintain facilities. Again, you emphasize throughout the plan that the county board partners and collaborates with a large number of groups, including local, interstate, tribal, regional, and others. You hire a county administrator, manage county-owned properties. And the last point, and these are not in priority order, but I think it's an important one, is that you influence policy. And in these discussions, we recognize the important role of the county board of commissioners in using the bully pulpit, if you will, to make your positions known on policies, whether they be federal, state, regional, or local, that affect Manistee County.
This chart was developed to help explain the county organizational structure and it's complicated, but it's not as complicated as a lot of them out there are. But when you take a really good look at it, you'll see a large number of different organizations and groups all working on behalf of the most important group in the county, which is the citizens. So all of these functions, all these people are working to, on behalf of the citizens of Manistee County. So as Tim told you and what we said is that we went out and during the county's strategic planning process, talked to a large number of stakeholders. We interviewed the county commissioners separately and then we conducted discussions with large groups of people and we pretty much asked everyone the same set of questions. And so when it came down to comparing responses to those questions, we saw that there were a lot of similarities what folks were saying. And so this chart that we have up here shows, this column are comments that the commissioners made in response to the questions. This column captures responses from the people that we interviewed and the shaded areas are how a lot of the comments that were said were the same and were very similar. And that was true throughout all of the various issues that we talked about. The other nice thing about the way that we did this is we captured folks' comments almost verbatim and we took those comments and then we started to see patterns in them.
So out of that, the input from stakeholders as well as your input, you identified areas of focus for your goals, strategies, and action steps. And they include economic and community development, government operations, employment and training, health and human resources, infrastructure, natural resources, and recreation. So we'll provide a snapshot of the goals and the strategies of each one of those areas of focus and encourage individuals who are interested in this, and we hope a large number of people are, to review the full strategic plan to gain a better understanding of what all the activities are, who's responsible, and when they're scheduled to happen. Economic and community development, goal to have viable job options, economic opportunities, and prosperous communities throughout Manistee County. And you establish four strategies, all of which are powerful. One is to achieve a development-ready county. And in making that statement, you recognize that the local governments and tribal governments in Manistee County have come a long ways in the last few years to develop plans and strategies that define in their own context what development-ready means and you want to support that. Tourism, obviously a huge factor in Manistee's economy, fully leveraging pure Michigan brand and the county, thanks to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, has made a lot of progress in that regard. But also supporting communities, businesses, nonprofits, getting everyone unified around making Manistee County a destination for four-season enjoyment. Housing, key element in economic development and the fact is, we do have an absence of low-to-moderate income housing and you want to support efforts that create diverse and livable housing and affordable housing throughout the county. Last but by no means least, and one that we're particularly excited about at the AES, is completing manufacturing and agricultural strategies for Manistee County. We have already gone a long ways toward developing an agricultural strategy and you'll be hearing more about that very soon.
So we also, part of the topics of focus that bubbled up, obviously, is the government operations. You guys set the goal to have operations of county government that are fiscally responsible and technologically innovative, striving for strong leadership, held accountable, effectively communicating, and providing safety for all citizens. And the strategy centered around to achieve that goal, finance, technology, leadership and accountability, communications, and safety. For finance, you want to be fiscally accountable by reflecting yearly on your budget, preparation, implementation. Technology, you want to make sure that you're innovative and that meets your needs. Leadership and accountability, you want to provide standards that promote strong leaders that hold themselves accountable and are also held accountable by the public and for their actions. Communications, provide effective and timely communication to all the folks in the county. And for safety, strive for leading practice and efforts to ensure safety throughout the And another goal centered around employment and training, to have a county where residents have quality education and training opportunities that allow them to reach their full potential. These strategies centered around three different topics, county youth educational opportunities, basically to allow the youth in our community to job shadow, to see what local government is about, and to see if maybe that might spark some interest within them. Cradle to career educational opportunities. We want to support all types of educational opportunities from birth until, you know, long past. We're always learning, we're always educating, and we're always in essence reinventing ourselves and to provide opportunities within the county to allow us to reach our full potential in our education and in our endeavors. So we're going to support K-12 education and Launch Manistee. Launch Manistee is a program that just started here in Manistee County to look at this very issue. And we're going to provide opportunities for technical training, higher education for all the citizens of the county, and then county employee educational opportunities. So to support efforts within the county for the employees and elected officials to continue with their education and to keep on top of the latest and greatest that this world can offer us. Another goal centered around health and human resources, to be a county where you can receive affordable, quality medical care. And we do have a lot of great resources here in our county. So your strategy is focused around those great resources. The central wellness, we want to continue to work with the healthcare professionals there to expand the opportunities of central wellness. For senior care, we want to continue to work with the Manistee Council on Aging and other appropriate organizations to advance opportunities to take care of our seniors. We do have a large senior population, the average age of the county is 47, and a lot of those seniors are great resources for us and we need to make sure that we take good care of them. And the rest of our medical care facilities, to work to support medical facilities in general. And the rest of our medical care facilities, to work to support medical facilities in general.
We spent a lot of time during our meetings, and the stakeholders also spent a lot of time talking about the need for a lot of attention to infrastructure. And your goal is to maintain public infrastructure and transportation services. You also identify a number of strategies to help achieve that important goal. One municipal sewer and water, forwarding the opportunities to develop infrastructure along the US-31 commercial corridor with emphasis on municipal sewer. And of course, many of us participated in the recent event marketing the conclusion of a tremendous collaborative effort involving the Little River Ban, Manistee Township, the county, the city, and others in developing sewer capacity along the Manistee Township US-31 corridor. With regard to roads, engage all interests in transportation planning to support and improve our road system. Non-motorized transportation, and communities throughout Michigan and the nation are paying a lot of attention to this, particularly given the economic impact that non-motorized transportation has on communities. But your strategy there is to maintain, enhance, and expand non-motorized transportation. And with the help and leadership of your terrific county planning director, Rob Carson, we're off to a running start in looking at a systematic trail system countywide. Deepwater Port, and this is again one that the AES is excited about jumping into, but that really, we have a deepwater port that really differentiates Manistee County. And the strategy being to maintain, enhance, and expand, recognizing the full power of our deepwater port to benefit the county. Wacker Airport, identify funding opportunities to maintain, enhance, and expand use, involvement of the airport. And we're in the process of kicking off strategic planning to support the airport authority right now. Public transportation, very important throughout Manistee County, and you recognize that. And your strategy to maintain, enhance, and expand public transportation services. Last, but by no means least, we do have a strong and effective rail system that has probably even greater potential to service the county, particularly manufacturing. And in your strategy, you want to maintain, enhance, and expand those services.
So, another goal topic is natural resources. And I don't need to tell anyone how wonderful this county is and the amount of natural resources that we have. And so you guys set the goal to be good stewards of our natural resources. And being good stewards means a lot of different things, but you're choosing to focus on recycling, to adopt a policy to have county recycling. And then stewardship in general, develop environmental stewardship and management principles and policies for our county. And that may sound like a really, a simple strategy, but good stewardship will ensure that those natural resources are used for all the purposes, whether it's economic development or recreational. So...
And as with natural resources, recreation and Manistee County are virtually synonymous. And your goal is to provide quality recreation, opportunities for people of all ages, needs, and abilities, to harness the full potential of our natural and human resources, recognize just how important recreation is, not only to the people that live here, but to the people that visit. I also should add here that in establishing this goal, you clearly recognized that about 20% of our general population in the county, and it's true throughout Michigan as well, has some level of disability. For those over 65, over 37% have some form of disability. And in developing recreation opportunities, we need to make sure that it responds to the needs and abilities of everyone. In your strategies, you laid out a three-point program that makes sense. One is recreational awareness, to simply ensure that people are aware of all of the programs and opportunities that exist in the county, and they are many, diverse, and countywide. Second, to expand programs and activities that are recreation-based for both residents and visitors, to continue to leverage our natural resources to their fullest. And third, and again, a process that your planning director has already kicked off, recreation planning, and to support the development of an updated countywide recreation plan that will encompass all of the various governmental bodies throughout Manistee County and have a county that is unified around taking our recreational experiences to the next level.
So, the different strategies, many of them have actions that you will undertake. And these actions are important because they're obviously the way that to move, plan ahead, and get some of these strategies and the goals accomplished. And so just briefly, three forms of actions that you will take as, in your capacity as county board of commissioners, is direct action of things that you can control and oversee. You will make recommendations, and you'll collaborate with others, other organizations, other government entities. You'll take positions and make recommendations on policies and proposals. So just very briefly, those are some of the things that you'll do and that the county will see you doing to forward this plan. So, you know, in the plan, you will see pages like this. And basically, what this will show you is the goal, the different strategy, and then different actions. So, goal, strategy, and these are some specific actions that can be taken. And these actions are almost like a checklist of things that you can do. And the numbering underneath actions, actually, every one of these things has a numbering system. So that at the end of the, every year, when you go back to evaluate the plan, you'll be able to report back to yourselves and to the residents of Manistee County what you've accomplished. And you'll use that numbering system to do that. So here, for the goal of county government operations, you had a strategy that dealt with finance. You've got a couple different actions that you can take. 2.1.1 is reviewing your budget. 2.1.2 is developing a plan for accelerating the payment of funded liabilities. So again, the plan, and when you look at the plan in more detail, you'll see a lot of these different actions.
So, in addition to creating your own scorecard for action and progress toward your strategic plan, at the same time, you talked about, as part of this process, the power of collaboration and collective action. And the benefit of, and the impact and the tangible results that are achieved when people and organizations work in unity for positive change. You also recognize the importance of leadership teams that have been forming throughout Manistee County, to work in that kind of unity, largely driven by volunteers as a way to get things done. And you supported the creation of leadership teams to build capacity in our communities, create economies of scale among and between governmental jurisdictions, which establishes a basis for collective action, where governmental agencies, private foundations, education, volunteers, literally everyone can be on the same page and working toward the same And the process of collective action is one you recognize as being really important, especially to a rural community where everyone needs to have an oar and water. And we talked at some length about the importance of articulating a strategy for the county, explaining that strategy, and get everyone, again, on the same page, whether it's government, nonprofit organizations, education, business leaders, or foundations, that good things happen when everyone is working together.
So, basically, formula for success: community-driven, volunteer-led initiatives. You know, we want to applaud you in all of the efforts and all the discussions about utilizing all the resources available to us in our communities to make things happen here. So this, you support community-driven, volunteer-led initiatives, and that those initiatives and that bottoms-up approach where the volunteers themselves are working towards achieving is really what's going to be, make things successful here in the county. And in the plan, and this slide right here shows you a number of different examples of how folks throughout the county, and this is just very brief, little, small paragraph of all the different initiatives that volunteers have taken under their wings to make sure, to make things happen. So in the back of the plan, there is a couple of different charts, and I'll just explain these charts real quick. They're meant for easy reference. The area of focus, this is an example, economic and community development. Here's our goal in orange. And in purple are a number of different strategies. The blue is the specific actions that can be taken to achieve that strategy and therefore that goal. And this green box here gets back to the idea of collective action and community-led initiatives. These are a list, a brief list, of all the different folks already working on the goal of economic and community development. All these folks are already undertaking a number of initiatives, and we, together, in unison, can ensure that we achieve this goal that you set, based on community input. So, every plan needs to be evaluated, it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be refined over time. And so you guys have talked about doing that, developing a committee that will look at it a couple times a year, and then report back to the larger commission, larger board, and then back to the community in general. And so with that said, we want everybody to know that everyone has a role in this plan. It's not just up to the commissioners here sitting at the table, not just up to AES, it's up to all of us, all of those folks who have been already looking at so many of these issues and have achieved so much in the past to continue to achieve. And so we ask that, you know, everyone gets involved, ask how you can help, participate, really work to take risks, because it's through risks that we learn what works and what doesn't. And that we take the time to celebrate all of our successes, because we have a lot of wonderful successes here in Manistee County. Very proud to live in a county that does a lot of great things, and we just need to make sure that great things continue to happen. So, we thank you for the opportunity to help you put together this county strategic plan. It was a lot of fun working with you. It's fun to go through the plan, to see your words come together in a really nice document that's communicated to the rest of the county and the folks. And I hope people out there in the county pick this up and read it. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call Tim or I at the Alliance for Economic Success. And if you ever want us to come back to talk about the plan again before your next update, we'd be happy to do that. And thank you, you do very much.
Any questions?
Very good presentation.
Yes, thank you very much for your time.
I have one thing there. You talked about the strategies in, I'll take finance. You know, the strategies in there, it talks about the old fact, you know, keeping up with that, keeping up with MERS and such, keeping up with the bond ratings. Those are the strategies that will be identified every year as working on. And that's not only a reminder to us, but it's a reminder to the entire county that we're, we know these are issues that we're working on, and it's continuing effort. Things like the recreation plan, one of them strategies there for tourism, we will end up being adopting a recreation plan sometime next summer. So that will be a plan identified in that strategic plan as being accomplished on 6/15/2015. So, there will be some goals that will be achieved, and there will be some goals that will be ongoing, working. And when we see something that's not marked as working on or already achieved, that will be a reminder to us that we need to look at this and make sure, want to know why we're not working on it. So it's a reminder to us also, but it's also committed to the county. And I thank Tim Urban and Tamara Wiswinski for their participation also. Thank you.
I, you know, I was mentioning something about a committee doing an interview. I really think the whole...
Yeah, and I think we'll move that over to the personnel and discuss that personnel meeting, but I think you're right. We can actually discuss that. We need to have the whole board.
There is one other thing, we talked about it last month, actually. And we talked about who's going to get this strategic plan, how many hard copies are we going to print and everything? As anyone, how are we going to come up with a list of who we think needs to get one? Either electronically or a paperback or a...
One thing we're going to do, we've talked a little bit to Tamara about that. I've got Julie kind of preparing a list, mainly of township, village, officials, city. We're going to put it on our website. I've already had a couple members of the public actually come to my office and ask for a copy. I told them I would rather not give them the draft, I would rather give them. So they're kind of patiently waiting for that. So, I told them it was going to be on TV too, but they obviously would like to see a document they can sit in their living room and read. And that's, that's good. So I've got that name. We'll come up with a list.
You know, one of the, a really fun day for me was when I was talking to the library board. Those folks, it's their job, information, right? They came up with a lot of great ways to get the plan out to the public. So, we will continue to work on all, all the different methods to reach as many folks in the county.
We definitely want all our department supervisors, elected officials, judges, everyone to get a copy. So we will make sure that that is either emailed to them, or if they want a hard copy of it, we can provide that to them. Sheriff was just asking me, he says, where can I get my hands on a copy of this? So, there is interest out there from our elected officials, you know, they obviously want to see it. You know, it's going to become a part of our everyday life. I mean, I mentioned a decision you made earlier, that it's really right along with your strategic plan. So, I'm going to probably have, I'm going to say that a lot in a lot of decisions that you make or recommendations that we make, that this is in accordance with your strategic planning process.
One of the first steps you can do is put that little baby right on these two.
Right, right.
So anytime we look at it, we can look at it.
Just real quick, anecdote related to that, is that we also want to send the plan out via email to all the stakeholders, and those are dozens and dozens and dozens of people and groups, because they need, they should see, where they provided input into. We also will prepare on your behalf a news release that announces it and tells everybody how and where they can access this.
Do you have the emails for all those folks?
I think we do.
That's good. How convenient.
I'm still convinced that MAC should receive one.
Oh, absolutely. We'll send one to the Township Association, we'll send one to the Michigan Association of Counties, we probably should send one to somewhere, you know, maybe multiple copies to state government, lots of, lots of different places that...
I think about email and electronic, because we're not paperless.
MAC actually expressed an interest to us in especially having this presented at their annual meeting.
Right. So that, that would be great if we actually could make a presentation at the MAC conference. Kind of brag about it a little bit.
Well, if you presented to the manufacturer strategy, did you go over strategy 1.4 in manufacturing in this presentation that I just went right through me? Okay. They forget me about these things.
Any other questions? Tim, Tamara, thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you again.
All right, moving on, joint court.
Oh, for joint court? Okay, let's, let's move on to... Regional summit, so that I can...
She wants to...
Well, I think it's helpful if she's, if she's there.
Okay, well, let's move on to regional summit, and Mark, since Jim's not here.
Well, I think we had a great event, and Lisa's gone, and Joe's going to have her give us the stats on who attended and how many. But I thought, I thought the topics were very good.
But I thought, I thought the topics were very good. I thought the county commissioners did a nice job of giving the updates and doing the introductions. I thought the crowd was very good, food was good, location was good. I think it's one of the best we've done, top of the roof. Topics were very, very timely, I thought.
You guys are all in favor of having it again next year?
I certainly am.
First exposure to it for me, it was, I didn't know what to expect, and it was, it was all right.
Yeah, I think it was surely useful and informative, so.
Yeah, I think it's well worth the effort. For one thing, it, it's an opportunity for the board to bring a lot of people from local government together, and we're putting it on, so it's, I think it's a plus if nothing else is to stand out. We're doing something and inviting the entire county to...
Something else, we talked about it last year, and I'm not real popular with the idea of all the tables all lined up in the initial presentation. Just like lunch, I like the idea of different peoples interacting together at round tables set up in that form.
Well, that can be discussed when the Regional Summit Committee starts meeting next year or later.
I'm just saying it because I said it last year, and it didn't happen.
Well, if I may...
There were reasons, there were reasons.
Yeah, we, we toyed back and forth with the round tables and the classroom setting. Two reasons that round tables during a presentation isn't a good idea is number one, people always at the front of the table have their back, you know, if they're sitting at the table, so they have to turn around, not a big deal. The other thing that bothers me about the round tables is then there's a lot of chatter going on during the presentation, where if your classroom style, it, there's more focus. But we did, there was, we did the evaluations or the surveys, there was a lot of feedback about the way it was set up. They didn't put aisles in this year, so they were longer sections that you had to walk through, made it more cramped and uncomfortable. So if we were to go back next year, we would definitely kind of reevaluate what would be...
There's two different purposes there, too. There's two different purposes, because when you've got the long tables like that, that's for presentations, and the round tables really are for discussion. So if we were going to have breakout sessions and have discussion, that would be great, but it's probably going to extend the time, so you know.
Well, and we had, we had the break, the, to have that half hour to do more networking. Unfortunately, we ran over a little bit more than we intended some next year. We may have to add a little bit more time back on. We finished an hour earlier this year than we did in the previous year, so maybe we just add a little bit of extra time so there is more networking.
Well, like you say, maybe a couple aisles in there and a little bit, that might help.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. What about all the evaluation papers you got back? Have you went through them yet?
We've been through them. What we'll do is for the next Regional Summit meeting, we'll compile all of the responses, and then, you know, you'll get them in your board packets. Lots of great feedback, lots of kudos to all of the commissioners. They liked that we went to the commissioners, all of the commissioners being involved in the whole summit itself by having each of you have your own section, so.
Good exposure, too.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, I guess some folks had said they thought they were pretty good, too. How many attendees did we have? Do you know that?
We were close to the 80 mark. We had a couple that, I think we had 87 registered, some of those, some of that 87 weren't going to eat. We paid for 83, I think, and we had close to 80 that, that showed up, because we had a couple that didn't sign up that came.
Would you consider that a success, or...
Most definitely.
What you expected?
Most definitely. I think even a little bit better than last year.
Okay. Anything else on the Regional Summit? If not, I'll take the motion to accept the report.
I'm going to.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Joint Courts. And Mr. Kropchak is not here, so Mr. Doss, would you address that, please?
All right. Well, the biggest part, portion of the Joint Court meeting was in regards to wages and benefits. And with that, as you can see, I don't exactly know how to bridge this, to be honest with you.
I can, I can, I think, Lisa, I can help a little bit here. The judge proposed, actually started the meeting off by saying, you haven't negotiated with us yet. And Bonnie Toski has told, our, I believe her attorney has told us, the courts really have the ability to negotiate with you, but only based on what you're giving other employees, basically. I mean, that's the starting point. So Benzie, you're dealing with Manistee County, just, I'm going to give you a little history here. Manistee County provides all of the wages and fringe benefits for all court employees except for just a couple of people in the probate court in Benzie County.
Probate and...
And maybe, but for the most part, think of it as, Manistee County, all the court employees, even in Benzie County, for the most part, are on Manistee County's wage and fringe benefit package. Then through my office, through Lisa, we bill Benzie County each month for all the wages and fringe benefits for the portion of the wage and fringe benefit package that is paid for by the, by Benzie County. And that differs from court to court. Some of them are 100% Benzie, so we pay them, and we bill them 100%. And we put that money in our revenues. So your, your expense budget has all the wages and fringe benefits for pretty much all the court employees, even, even the Benzie County people. Then on your revenue side, for some court employees, it's 100% that we bill Benzie, and we deposit that in our revenues. For some, it's only 40%, because there's a 60-40 split. And then in the front of the court, it's a kind of a mixture through the CRP and through a whole bunch of other things. So Benzie County budgeted for all their employees, first of all, when we received our budget request forms from the courts, they asked for 3% wage increases. I immediately took that money out of the budget. The administrator in Benzie County did not. He put 3% in. And so Benzie County is budgeted for a 3% wage increase for court employees. That doesn't mean they have approved that, but that pretty much gives the judge the ability to give those raises if he feels, in Benzie County. Manistee County budgeted zero. The judge came, in Benzie County, the other non-union, non-court employees were going to be receiving, I believe, 1% in October and another 1% in April, for really an average of about 1.5%.
That was their union, that was their union.
So Judge Botscher proposed giving the Benzie County employees, court employees, 1.5%. So if you're working 40% in Benzie County, 40% of your wage will get a 1.5% increase. If you're working 100% in Benzie County, you're going to get 1.5% on your entire wage. In Manistee County, he's proposing a 1% increase for county employees. And you can see, without me getting into it, because it's not really public yet, you know where the 1% came from. The 1% then would be on 60% of some people's wage, and 1.5 on the other 40%. And then we bill Benzie County for the 1.5% and the 40% of the wage. Causes us a little bit of confusion. It won't cause payroll problems, but it does make it a little more complex in the budgeting process, makes it a little more complex when Lisa bills. It's, it's really at the very beginning that that's a problem. After that, it won't be so much of a problem. And that's what the committee is recommending, is that Benzie doesn't have to do anything, because the judge has the authority to give up to 3%. He promised Benzie County he was only going to give 1.5% to the Benzie County employees. The other 1%, he made a recommendation that Manistee County give a 1% increase to Manistee County court employees effective October 1st. So some will get 1%, if you approve this today, some will get 1% on 60%, some will get 1% on whatever, 100%. It just depends on who you are, what position you're in. That's the recommendation. We think that will cost us, although the more I look at this, I'm not sure if this includes the entire wage or not, but Lisa gave me a...
Yes, it does, because you told me to...
It's on everything.
Right.
So it's really a little bit less for us.
It will.
Net, net. All the court employees getting 1% will cost $16,030, over and above what your budget is today. That net will be about 40% less, I believe, somewhere around that, in rough numbers. So...
Plus, plus reimbursement.
You're looking at about $10,000 as your net cost to provide 1% wage increases to court employees. That's the recommendation.
How do you round from 16 to 10?
Because we will get reimbursement for part of Benzie County's, plus the state.
I don't know that it'll be that much.
It might not be that much. It's very difficult, I mean, it's very difficult without sitting down and figuring everyone's wage individually, putting it in the budget, putting the revenues in. We haven't had time to do that, even though Lisa's given me some of the information. I haven't had time to sit down and, you know, because you're going to need to amend your budget.
I don't know how front of the court's going to work.
Yeah.
Because their, their wages, from what I understand David telling me in previous conversation, is that their wages are reimbursed differently every day, based on what they do. And that's part of the C, I think the CRP contract or whatever. So I have, I have a message in to him to find out how, how those are going to affect his employees. We have an employee whose wage is a 60-40 split between Circuit Court and Front of the Court, okay? Then that 60%, that Circuit Court is split 60-40 between Benzie. So now I have to take that wage, not only is it split in the budget, but then I have to take that 60% of his Circuit Court and split it 60-40, 60 being 1%, 40 being, or, yeah, 40% being 1.5. So it just, as I started to...
And keep in mind, this is only going to have to only be for one year like this, because if we continue to try to do this, it will get more and more complex every single year. So we're going to have to say, okay, we're going to split it 1.5, 1 this year, but after this year, we're going to take that entire wage, and we're going to split it 60-40. Because if you ask us to continue to do this, it will just get more and more, you can see where it will get more and more complex every year.
My concern is the billing, because after just going in and doing the wages with the budget, budget, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around how, when I do their billing, because I have everything set up in an Excel spreadsheet, and it splits it, and now that's going to all have to change somehow because of the 1 and 1 and...
Did the, did the courts get a raise last year or this year?
Yes, they received 2% at the same time that all of us received 2%. So they did receive, they did receive those...
Okay, did Benzie County receive a raise last year?
Not the court.
Or just their 60% of our, our obligation?
They didn't receive, they received 2%.
Right, of the 60%.
No, they received 2% of their entire wage. Benzie agreed with me.
Oh, okay, that's what I was asking. I thought you said they did.
I believe, yes. Because we didn't do, we didn't get into this complicated issue.
Right.
When we sat at the Joint Court Committee meeting, I could see that Lisa was thinking of all the complications. I was thinking of them too, but I was thinking, this isn't as difficult as we're making it sound. Once we get it to the payroll, we're not going to say, well, for these hours, you're going to get $14 an hour, and for these hours, you're going to get 15. It's going to be, here's your hourly rate, period. Once we figure that out, that's easy. The payroll part isn't going to be hard. What Lisa just mentioned, the billing part and keeping that all separate, especially in the front of the court, is going to be the difficult part.
Well, you know, it seemed like to me Benzie County should have run along with us on that, because, you know, those kind of disparities create tension among important people, too, then.
Well, Benzie County really doesn't have any action to take today. They're meeting, and they're not going to take any action on this, because what they did is they budgeted 3% in the court budget.
They could have, they could have done things to change that.
They got a little smarter, too.
I've been around long enough to know that you don't do that. They have a new administrator who budgeted it. This, it's not an issue, it's not something he did wrong. He budgeted it, and as a result, the judge is saying, now I have the money in my budget, I can, I can use this.
That's why there's a disparity.
So that's not, I mean, I'm not saying anything negative about that, but we used, we did, I've done that before, too.
He did also say that Benzie can be a problem at the end of the year. They still considered a full court revenue. They didn't take it out like we did. He said, we could be a problem at the end of the year.
I will tell you that it does appear, I was going to announce this, I think I may have announced it earlier, it does appear that there's going to be some legislation which will allow our court costs to go back to somewhere near normal. That's, the state legislature is taking some action that's going to help that.
Then we can adjust, adjust our budget.
We can adjust our revenues at that point, too, so.
That's the Cunningham.
The Cunningham case is, took it away, there, I think it's, House Bill 5785 is, I think that's what it is, is correcting that problem. And Ray Frans, Representative Frans, asked me to look at that and see if there's any problems. I can tell you the Michigan Association of Counties testified before the House, the House Committee on this in favor of that legislation. So counties across the state are in favor of what the state is proposing. That's a temporary fix. Long-term, there's going to be some discussion about court funding, which has been kind of in discussion since I've been here 28 years, so don't hold your breath on that, but there is at least a temporary fix on this.
Does the increase also, in other word, in other words, some of your confusion, 60-40, does, does that apply to the benefits also, or don't that affect the benefits?
It don't affect the benefits. Well, it will affect the benefits that, that are affected by the wage, health insurance or dental, it will affect it. I will tell you this, and that if you agree to this, those of us that are non-union and elected officials will probably be for you next month asking for the same thing, because now you've got that snowball effect.
Rightfully so, yeah. But y'all got 2% last year, and just because the union got a 1% this year, the courts want a 1%, and, well, why should we leave the rest of the court outside?
You know, that comes to the point of the 9 and 11. We said there weren't going to be no raises. We shot that rate the heck out of it.
We haven't yet, no.
Yeah, we may want to make an adjustment to that here, because to compensate for all this money we're putting out. Because that was a really...
Well, we may have to do that next year, yeah.
All I can say is if you don't agree with this, you vote against it, and we go back to the Joint Court Committee and try to hammer something different out. That won't be a fun process, I can guarantee you that, but that's up to you.
Yes, it is, please.
Oh, boy. The reason I think it was done this month is that October 1st starts the new year, and we can get those wages implemented October 1st.
And how many other people, if this passes, or if there's a motion or whatever, and this passes, how many other people are there that are not covered under the Joint Courts that are not affected by this one?
Well, I don't have that number for you today, but I can tell you, all five elected officials.
Yep.
Everyone in my office.
Everybody in your office.
Everyone in the county clerk's office.
Chief Deputy, some electors' office, 30, 35, 30.
I don't know if it's, is it that big?
I'm looking at the, I'm signing up.
It will be several people. It will be at least another 16, 17.
My own, my own personal opinion is, is if we go and okay this 1%, then I would be in favor of okaying a 1% for the rest of these individuals who are left out in the cold here.
What is the additional cost for that, $16,000 or something? What is the additional cost for that, $16,000 or something?
Your net cost for the courts will probably be somewhere around 10,000 to 12,000. If you do it, if you then give it to all the elected officials, the people in my office, the people in the clerk's office, all the other non-union elected officials, several people in the sheriff's department, the sheriff, undersheriff, lieutenant, emergency management coordinator, those are all people that would be in the non-union.
To be fair, to be fair, I think we either have to go 1% with everybody that we did last year at that, too, or no one, one or the other.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get an idea of a ballpark figure we can talk about.
I'm guessing that you will be somewhere in the $16,000 range for those people to...
What, I can't even think of the number. One, oh, that's with the courts, so it'd be about 16,000.
That's for the courts.
That's, no, I'm talking about the courts. You're talking about all the folks that Mr. Heather...
Where's that other thing that gave you, gave you the...
Oh, oh, we do have, we do have this number, I'm sorry.
I thought we got...
That was a state senior.
Non-union elected officials, another 16,000 dollars. 16.5 roughly.
16.5.
That's for everybody?
That would be for all non-union people that have not been included. That's not just the wage, that's the wage in a 30% range.
Talking 32,000 total.
Well, well, actually, that first 16,000 gets reimbursed back, it's really 10,000 to 12,000.
10,000 to 12,000, extra?
26, 28.
10 to 12, not 16. It starts out at 16, but by the time you do 16, it's...
So you got 16 and 10, so you're talking about 26,000, 25 and 30,000?
Uh, probably between 30 and 32,000 total, because you've got 16,000 plus 10,000 plus another 5,000 for GEA of...
Oh, let's see, what's, where are you, the 5,000?
That's it.
You approved already.
The union.
Community board.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah. Yeah, that was 5 or 6, I didn't remember.
Well, I was really curious about this one paragraph in here, it says Judge Bakter, Bakter, Bakter reminded the committee that the chief judge sets a salary for the court employees, not the county board.
He does.
The chief judge will allocate monies depending on, on payment sources and within budget. So, so for just a minute, you said he does, so for just a minute, why are we even talking about it?
Because you have to give him the money. He can't give wage increases if you don't give him the money to give wage increases.
Yeah, see, that's what Tom was smart about, is he didn't build any into the budget with the...
Well, so he, so he don't...
And he is required under an administrative ruling by the Supreme Court Justice to negotiate with the county to some extent.
Well, can we ask that next year that this negotiation is with these joint courts start a little sooner?
Well, it actually was. It actually, it actually was requested a few months back.
Was it?
But because of ongoing negotiations that we have, we asked to defer, so that was granted.
Might have some conversations with the counterpart, maybe?
It has.
Great.
Okay. Any more discussion?
What are we voting on now?
Well, that, where there's no vote right now, there's no motion. There's no motion on this.
The recommendation by the committee is to recommend a 1% increase on Manasty County portion of the wage, the salary slash wage for Manasty, Manasty Court Employees for fiscal year 2014, 15. That gives us our marching orders to start all the calculations.
And with that, I will make that motion once again, see if there's a support.
Hey, you made it, okay. Hey, I'll support it.
Okay, discussion.
That's 1%.
My, my concern is, is if we're going to do it for the joint courts, we're going to do it for the rest of the non-union people.
Well, you won't know that.
Is that in the motion?
No, that's got to be different motion.
You've got to take a chance on that, Ken.
Well, you can't amend a motion to include those people if you so choose.
Well, I would, I'd prefer to see them separated. You know, this is a joint court, this is the courts here.
You've got to trust your brother commissioner. You have a court cap.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmatt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
And with that, I will also make a motion to give a 1% increase for the... Non-union?
Non-union.
Non-collective.
Non-court elected officials. That covers it.
Everybody got that?
Yeah, I'll second that, just because I got a question.
Discussion. Discussion.
Yeah, um, you talk about elected officials, that don't include us. We, we can't make the motion for ourselves, and I don't want to be able to make that.
Exactly. It would include all the elected officials unless you specify otherwise.
Well, do, well, we need to probably specify, you know, registered deeds, clerk, sheriff.
She's not an elected official.
I don't want, you know, we've got drain commissioner, we've got, who else is a...
Kelly Surveiller. But we don't really pay a salary to...
Yeah, that is elected.
Yeah, it is.
We don't pay a salary to...
I think we should just put all of them.
We must have to list, reschedule.
I, I know who they are. The, the, it's the county clerk, registered deeds, treasurer, prosecuting attorney, sheriff, and then if you want to include the part-time elected officials, it would include the drain commissioner.
Now, I would leave it at those five.
Then you need to state that.
The surveyor elected official.
The surveyor, we pay him based on the REMON program. I wouldn't include him in this if I were you. The drain commissioner is a whole different story, it's up to you.
Yeah, he would agree with Mr. Don, he would post you on, he'd go with five.
Yeah, that's, I'd like to have my motion reflect that, those five.
Okay, so 1%, your motion is 1% increase to all non-union, non-court, and elected, and the five full-time elected officials, we'll name those in the motion, which is the ones that I just mentioned.
And that's about 16,000, right?
But just for that, isn't the drain commissioner a full-time elected official?
No. The drain commissioner is paid about $4,000 a year.
Right, I know.
That's not considered, I wouldn't consider that a full-time position. Technically, you know, every elected official works the hours they want to work, they're required to be here one day a year. If they, we're only here one day a year, I don't think they'd get reelected. And so I can't, all of our elected officials are full-time, we work every single day. But, I mean, there is no hour set for elected officials. So...
So, John, those...
The, the wage you give to the drain commissioner is based on what you perceive to be the amount of time he needs to be working.
Any more discussion?
Well, I just, that, those five, basically, are 16,000.
Uh, no, no, this is, this is, you're, you're not only including the elected officials in the motion, I heard you're including...
Their staff, too.
The staff of the county clerk's office, the staff of my office, the staff...
Non-union staff, also.
The staff of the sheriff that's non-union.
Clerk's office, non-staff, anybody that's not... Everybody that's not, everybody else in the courthouse here who was non, or, yeah, who was non-union.
Okay. And that's all within 16,000.
You are probably getting, getting close to what you, what you budgeted last year for the current year out of your fund balance, which is pretty close to 100,000. I think you were at 79,000 when you budgeted, when you adopted your budget last year. That budget will have to be amended now, and it, that might be in a separate motion, although I can't give you an exact number, that's the problem.
We don't have to do that.
You don't have to. I want to put the budget books out, and I probably will put the budget books out with just the current budget that's adopted, and then we'll just adjust the wages at later in the...
Next, next meeting or whatever.
And then the budget books will just reflect the old wages.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Is that, Alan, is that the second you supported was my reviewed...
Yeah, you, you're amended, you're amended.
The fabulous five?
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to, to, in record, though, that now that everyone's got a raise, we should have went to 11%.
Bring that up at next vote, you see.
Yeah, no, we should go to 13 next time, because we...
It's always an option.
But I mean, that was, I mean, what was told the board and what actually is happening is not real.
Well, it's not, it's not...
That's not the reality.
It's a matter of what the board has chosen to do.
That's correct.
We can't, we can't play the Elsmer's game, that's all.
Nope, that's all.
It's also...
But you bring that up for discussion next year.
It's also a manner of keeping the quality of workers that we have here. At some point, yes, there's a takeaway. I mean, you can't give them 5% and 1% sounds so minimal, but it's the best that you can do in, to keep that quality, and I think it's important.
And remember, it should have taken four votes.
Yeah, it was three to four, the vote was on that, on the budget. That's why I keep bringing it up, because it was a promise, it was, it was convenient, we did it. But go ahead and let's take that vote, we're done with this one, go on to the next.
All right, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmatt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Let's go to miscellaneous. Bruce, you have something about a potential East Annex roof project?
I asked, I put this on the agenda mainly because part of your capital improvement budget includes a, the need to replace the East Annex roof, which is the roof over the county, the one-story part of this building.
Okay.
When I first heard from Bruce that we needed a new roof, I said, gosh, should we just replace that roof? Well, that was 20 years, over 20 years ago. So it, I guess time flies, but it is in need of, of replacement. We would like, Bruce tells me it would be good if we got that roof replaced before the winter season, which is vastly appro, fast approaching. You do not meet again until the 28th of October, because you meet the 4th Tuesday in October, which is, if we approve bids at the October 28th meeting, it really doesn't give us much time. We may have snow by that time, who knows? So I've asked Bruce to put specs together, which he has done, and he has put together a bid deadline of October 7th for, to receive those bids. We would like to have you schedule a special meeting for sometime after October 7th, hopefully a few days after, so that we can evaluate the bids and bring you a recommendation, so that the bids can be approved and the work can get started. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
We're expecting this project to be somewhere around 30 to 40,000 dollars. We do have the money budgeted, it is one of the priority items in the capital improvement budget. There are many projects in the capital improvement budget this year that...
Okay. Bruce, when you get your, when you get your bids back, Bruce, how much, how long do you have, how long will it take you to prepare for the meeting?
Well, why would we get the bids back? I've already written the specs and everything, so once the bids come back, we just have to slug the contractor, you know, have to slug the contractor.
Right, okay, well, I mean, you can have that prepared within a day or two or something like that.
I would say...
Talking the week of the 6th.
Well, the bids are due on Tuesday the 7th.
Yeah.
At 3 o'clock.
What about the 10th, was it a Friday?
We've got a joint court in Benzie that day.
Do you?
But we could do it in the morning, Thursday.
Thursday, and then I got a full...
Mark, do we have regional summit that same day?
Uh, let's see.
I can't.
On the 2nd, on the 2nd, on the 9th, nope, the 9th is not, so, and it's usually on a Friday, usually, not a...
Right.
Yeah, we're looking at the 10th right now.
Oh, the 10th?
Yeah.
I don't believe it.
October 10th, there's a regional summit at 10:00 AM and a 2:00 PM joint court committee meeting. I'm not sure if that meeting will be held now or not.
Can we have a, like I said, at 11 o'clock? A regional summit be over within an hour?
Yeah.
And I give you guys time to, where's Benzie, where's the joint court, in Benzie or...
It's in Benzie.
Does that give you time to go up to, okay. The 10th at 11, look good, guys?
Yep.
October 10th.
October 10th at 11, here. Okay.
Had to let...
I think you need a motion to stop that meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to stop the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
A second.
Okay, discussion.
What's the title of that again, is it review bids of what, I'm losing it.
For East Annex roof, East Annex roof repairs.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
If this is scheduled for next year, in last month or the month before, the month before, I mean, is it the last rain that dictated we need this right now?
Basically, what's happened is, you know, this was coming on, you know, I've had some leaks compared this year, but in the last month and a half, I've had, had 15 leaks develop. So what's happening is the roof has reached a point that with the heating and cooling, because of the weather, the way it's been, it is pulling away from, and tearing and creating these new leaks, and I just had seven leaks fixed last week. So it's, we don't, I, we, Tom and I discussed this previously, but we were hoping to go through the winter, but with the way it's, the rapid deterioration of it, I don't think we're going to make it, and that's why we discussed to bring it before you, to, to at least get the bids out there and...
It has to happen. I mean, you can't have those documents getting left, I mean, it just...
No, we have two boards, and, and the clerk's office, we've had one that keeps developing over the main lobby, it's, it's just got to the point where it's just failing all over.
That's, that's the entire East Annex and just...
The front lobby.
How long before this section of the building is going to have to be done?
Well, this, this section of the building was actually done, I think, in 2000.
2000, still under warranty.
Oh, so it's not this section, it's just the lobby in east.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, now, do you, what are you anticipating in this roof repair? I mean, I, any, anything more than normal?
Well, he's getting bids right now.
Well, we're getting bids, but, but the specs and I wrote with, and I talked to another roofing company, so we kind of worked together with this, but it's to replace the existing roof. It's the entire rubber roof, pull the ballast off, put a new rubber, you know, roof on there, repair any insulation. That's one thing I did pull out of the specs, is I didn't want a company to, to keep the cost lower, is to not figure repairing, replacing all the insulation underneath the, the rubber roof, but just as needed, you know, where the leaks have developed and where it's deteriorated. So to have that insulation done as a time material basis, but I want that included in the bid. So also I wanted the option as far as to do it during regular business hours or on weekends and see, you know, make a decision there, how you want to go forward with that.
Just, just to give you a little good news, we've been trying to do a lot of, we received a grant a while back, several years ago, to do energy upgrades. We just received a check from DTE Energy for $39,08, $38.75 that we put into the capital improvement fund. These are some rebates done as a result of...
Boiler project.
Boiler project and some of the other work that's been done recently, so just, that won't pay for the roof, obviously, but it'll put a little bit in it.
Well, Consumer's Power did bring a rally check, which, the, the other check for the boiler project, which we have seen, but it's, it's around $2,000 or a little more.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Tom, did you say the birthday on October the twenty-eighth?
We have to go back.
Yeah, the fourth.
Fourth Tuesday of the month, yes.
Okay. We...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the joint court meeting.
Thank you, I'll, uh, you have a second? Okay, have a motion, have a second? Any more discussion on joint courts? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kaminsky?
I don't think I have anything that I haven't sent out already.
I sent this email yesterday. Thank you, gentlemen.
Bruce, thank you.
A lengthy one, I might add, at least the documents.
Oh, that was the email. Yeah, there's, there's some legislation happening that Representative Franz has sent me some legislation. One was House Bill fifty-seven eighty-five regarding court funding. Um, I don't think I sent that to you yesterday. I did send Representative Franz an email saying, we're happy with this, we should be, you know, I, I saw that the Association of Counties was for it, why would we be against it? It's to fix the Cunningham case issues. But the other one that I sent you, which was lengthy, and I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but it will be acted upon probably before the end of the year, sometime in October, is the TIF slash...
DDA basis.
DDA financing legislation, which gives counties, I think they're trying to fix the process so that counties and other jurisdictions have more say in the matter. And, and, you know, if you understand DDAs, I mean, they're, they capture, for instance, if Meyer had been built in Filer Township, we would not receive one dime of tax dollars from that development. And that's because Filer has a DDA. If it was built in DDA, the DDA would capture all that money. That's not necessarily bad, but the, the counties need to have more say in the matter and have more negotiation power, so the state legislature sees that and is trying to, uh, create some legislation to give, give that, uh, a little more, counties a little more say in the matter. So, please review that if you get a chance, and if you have any comments, either submit them right to Representative Franz or to me, and I'll pass them along.
Peter, you would still, you would still collect that money from the DDA if, 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 if that was in, you just wouldn't capture no more than what's, what it said at, at the time of the...
It would capture the vacant, if, if, if Meyer was located in a DDA district, the DDA would capture the entire Meyer store, all the construction, all the parking, any improvements on that property. We would capture only the, what we captured before Meyer started.
Right, right.
Which is the vacant, vacant land value.
Which is nothing compared, I understand that, but you would still get money.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's it. Oh, just so you know, any of you are interested, Mr. Schaefer's mother's memorial service is tomorrow, Wednesday, at one o'clock, at the church, First Church of Wellston, it's located at fourteen sixty-six Pine, I think that's either Pine Street or Pine Road in Wellston. Not exactly sure where that is.
Says one o'clock.
One o'clock.
I think that's right by the post office, right by the corner of the post office, sir. That's the church, sir, and I think that's Pine Street.
It's, it's called the First Church of Wellston.
Should get lost.
No. Okay, Mr. Schmidt, anything to say?
No.
Mr. Bergstrom, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, Mr. Danz?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, direct the county comptroller to come up with some sort of resolution, whether he goes, he asks for information or to ask him, I, I don't care. So, all's I wanna do is send a letter to legislation to encourage them to look at the nineteen cents a gallon tax rate that we get for, that goes to the road commission, the gas funding. And all, all's I'm saying is, that's a, that's a, it's a process, it's, it's been going on for twenty years, I think it was outdated from day one. And the reason why I say we need to send it to legislation, that we encourage them to review it, to review it, is because I, I believe that if you see Representative Ray Franz, let's say, at the fair, or, or at the fairgrounds, say, and I talk to him, you know, I'd really like for you guys to, you know, revisit this and look at it, uh, yeah, yeah, we know it, we know it, everyone knows it, everyone knows it, everyone knows it. But until they get, I believe they get pressured from county commissioners, and I, I believe they should be copied to MAC Conference, but they might, they might put it on a backlog that we don't know when it'll happen. And I just think it's important that we let legislation know that we know that something needs to be done. And if you will know, they talked about this early this summer, everything gets backlogged all the time, and, and all the priorities get backed away, backed away. And what I think is, if we send them a letter now and it's sitting on their desk, the incumbents that get re-voted, that get voted in know that we, we want something to happen. And plus that, people who, in essence, get defeated, when they come, when new people come on board, they see that the public has said, we want something done. And, and that's all I'm asking for, is just ask them to revisit it, encourage them to put it on the priority list.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
The only thing I can, let's see if there's a second first.
I know you made a second.
No.
Oh, you did?
I do have a comment.
Oh, if you don't give a second here, then there's no reason for the comment.
I'll, I'll make a second.
Okay. Have a motion, have a second, comments?
Okay. I can tell you, it's, it's definitely on their plate. The, the only thing I would preface any of that is, is that roughly fifty percent of the funding that has, comes from the taxes, from the roads, from the gas tax, actually goes to roads. So, you know, to do something, I don't wanna just do something, I wanna be more specific than just saying, we need to do something, because the quick answer for everything is always increase it. Increase the gas tax, increase this tax, increase that tax. We're taxed plenty as it is, it's a matter of how they do it and what fund doesn't get bastardized, if you will, to where they actually do have the funds going, to where they originate from, and take care of what needs to be, as opposed to constantly pulling something from here. Peter paid Paul, if you will.
Well, that's why I encourage the words, review, review the process, review the funding.
So, are you looking for a letter that, or...
Yeah.
That's what it was.
The letter that I would, that I, based on what I've heard, would, I, uh, the letter would be somewhat generic in that we would be asking our state legislature to review, to put on the front burner, uh...
Funding.
Funding for roads.
And road commissions.
And road commissions, period.
Okay, I've got a question.
I mean, without any specifics, like raise the gas tax, or increase such and such, or decrease this, or put money from the general fund, it would be, we want, we want action on this to solve the problem.
Roll call, please.
I think he...
No, you can tell the question, he wants it over. He wants it over.
Well, I, your motion and what you just said are different things.
Well, that's, no, that was a letter to review it, yeah.
Yes.
To a letter to the state legislature to, asking them to...
Review?
Review the process, and then you said...
Well, to, to take action to increase road funding, so to speak, or...
Could we have, since the administrator's setting a letter, can we have the administrator kind of find in it?
If you...
We, we could have the letter, a letter drafted and look at it in our, what is it, ninth, tenth meeting?
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Yeah, there's no urgency, is there?
And all's, all's I'm saying is, we have no legislative control over it, I mean, we, we don't have nothing on it. And the person down the street don't have nothing on it, but until we as a group, as a county, and get MAC on board and say, you know, you guys really need to look at this, it's a problem, it's a problem in the United States. The road funding's a problem in, in the states.
We, we understand what you're saying, Alan, here, we just wanna make sure it's addressed properly. Um, can you have some type of a letter drafted up for the tenth?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Bergstrom?
Okay, Mr. Marshall, anything else?
At the airport Saturday, they had a fly-in, if you will, and, uh, the airport, the county was actually received a plaque from, uh, it was a proclamation signed by Governor Snyder in honor of the community support of the, of Manistee Blacker Airport. And it's a, really a prestigious, uh, plaque, and appropriately, it will be hung at the airport, but I, I accepted it from the, for the county, because Jeff turned me into a ring here.
We pushed you to the front.
But also, they had the, uh, Michigan Air Travel was, was there. It's a group of pilots that get together, they have, uh, friends and pilots from Canada also, so there was about thirty planes there, and it was in the newspaper, but they gave us a plaque also, and, uh, they do this round robin of flights, they go from one airport to another, to another, and they stopped in Manistee.